City's regular meeting on Monday, April 12th, 2021 pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N dash 29 dash 20. Members of the Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch this meeting via live stream, City Council meeting livestream, and also at http backslash backslash bit.ly slash daily city APR 12. And also, there are two ways to submit public comment. Send written comments by 4:00 PM on the meeting day and also register to speak at the meeting via Zoom. Let's all rise for the pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. May we have a vote call, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Present.
Dr. Rod.
Here.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present, thank you very much. I'd like to ask my colleagues if they are not speaking, please put yourself on mute. Thank you very much. So our first presentation is commending Daily City Public Library Associates on their 10th anniversary. And we have Mr. Brian Dossi, the DCPLA president, and also Victoria Mugbilang, the DCPLA Executive Director. Let me pull up. Thank you very much, Stephen. So this commendation is for the 10th anniversary of the Daily City Public Library Associates. Whereas Daily City Public Library Associates was formed in 2011 with the purpose of developing community civic and business support for fundraising, advocacy, and innovative programs that benefit our diverse community and promote greater awareness of the library's valuable resources. And whereas since in its inception, Daily City Public Library Associates has provided over 265,000 for purchasing new books, technology, refurbishing libraries, maintaining facilities, and so much more. And whereas the work of the Daily City Public Library Associates highlights our library as the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. And whereas by giving other time, talents, and resources, Daily City Public Library Associates volunteerism promotes civic engagement and improves Daily City's libraries for all. And whereas Daily City Public Library Associates, DCPLA, is launching the Daily City Youth Poet Laureate Program in partnership with the National Youth Poet Laureate Program, Urban Word, and Daily City Public Library to celebrate teen poets who live or attend school in Daily City and exhibit a commitment to artistic excellence, civic engagement, leadership, and social justice. Now therefore, I, Justin C. Manalo, Mayor, and the members of the City Council do hereby join in celebrating the 10th anniversary of Daily City Public Library Associates. We encourage all residents to celebrate the achievements of the Daily City Public Library Associates over the past decade and remember this, everyone watching, on Saturday, April 17th at 6:30 PM on their online event. 10 years, DCPLA, 10 years strong. Congratulations on the amazing work. For a decade, you have all done so much in just a short 10 years. I mean, $265,000 is no small feat. And so, thank you so much for your continued service, volunteerism, and also just continually giving back to our libraries. Really being able to support our young people, our youth, the whole family in general, to our elders, and to everyone that uses exactly the cornerstone of our community in Daily City, our public libraries. And so, congratulations. And I hand it over to Executive Director Victoria Mugbilang and also President Dossi.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Brian Dossi here, your current president of the DCPLA. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. It's so great to see everybody. I look forward to seeing you all, hopefully in person sooner rather than later, the way things are going. First, I'd like to thank you so much for this commendation, celebrating the 10th anniversary of the DCPLA. As you know, we could not have achieved this milestone without the support of the City Council and city staff over these past several years. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize and thank the previous board members and retired Executive Director Susan Brisbane-Smith. Without them, none of this would have been possible. And I would also like to give a quick thank you and recognize our current Executive Director, Victoria, for all of her hard work and effort. Thank you so much, and we look forward to everyone joining on Saturday night at 6:30 for our Youth Poet Laureate Event. We're very excited for it, so hopefully we will see you all there virtually.
Thanks, Brian. I'm just kind of want to reiterate some of the things that Brian said. Thank you, Mayor Manalo, and all of the City Council of Daily City, as well as city employees like Shawna and Stephen. You guys recognize the importance of our public libraries in our community. You've always been great supporters of the DCPLA. You come to our events, your members, sometimes I have to remind you a little bit, but you're really busy. So I totally understand. And, you know, we know we can always count on you to be part of our team, and that means so much. And I'd also like to thank our library staff. You know, we do what we do because we want to enable them to best serve our community. And, you know, sometimes that means I'm asking them to do a little extra when they're already busy, but they never balk at that because, you know, at the end of the day, they're just there to do what they can for our community. So they're always happy to help, you know, we're working together, and that's really awesome team. And, you know, everything we've accomplished over the past 10 years is thanks to our volunteers, which includes our board, but also our members and our community sponsors, our business sponsors. Like, we're all working together because the libraries are so important. And I inherited an amazing organization from former Executive Director Susan Brisbane-Smith. Like, she definitely deserves so much credit for all of, you know, everything that the DCPLA has done over these past 10 years, as well as the past board and the board that we have now. You know, Susan worked tirelessly for eight years, and still, to this day, when I ask her for help, she's right there, calling people and emailing people and reminding me of things. So, you know, I couldn't have done, you know, what I've done without so much support from her. So, you know, I just want to again, you know, remind you guys, you know, I hope you'll all come to our event this Saturday. It's called DCPLA 10 Years Strong. Saturday is April 17th at 6:30 PM. We're really excited about it because we've created this amazing show that talks about our 10 years of service to our community. Plus, it has performances by, you know, Jefferson and Westmore High School students, the Drama Club, Mission Fusion, as well as our DCP, or I'm sorry, our Youth Poet Laureate finalists. You'll get to know all of them a little bit. And at the end of the event, we will name the first Daily City Youth Poet Laureate, who is actually going to be the very first Youth Poet Laureate in all of San Mateo County. So we're especially proud of that. I think, you know, a lot of us saw Amanda Gorman at the inauguration, give her speech, and it really inspired, you know, people to understand the importance of youth voices. And that's one thing we really want to champion. So please come to our event. It'll be on our website, dcpl.org. It's also on Facebook Live and our YouTube channel. If you're not already following us on those, you can just Google DC, or Daily City Public Library Associates to find that. And, you know, I want to conclude with just saying, I'm really so proud to be part of this organization, and I really appreciate this commendation for everything the DCPLA has done for 10 years and all of our big plans for the future. So thank you so much for having us here.
Thank you so much for all the continued work. We all look forward to celebrating with each and every one of you. And thank you to past board members and current board members. Really such an amazing feat, and your generosity to the community continues. So thank you so much. I'm so excited to see who the Youth Poet Laureate will be. I know that that's something, if you don't have plans on Saturday night, you better come through, and it's going to be really exciting to find out who's going to be representing as our Daily City Youth Poet Laureate. So at this time, I will ask my colleagues if they have any comments.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Yeah, thank you very much. First of all, this is so exciting. First of all, 10 years gone by so fast. Like you said, past, present, people, volunteers, and this great community. I can't thank you enough now that you're president, Mr. Dossi, and Victoria with your lead and your great board, and Susan Brisbane-Smith, who has left such a legacy. But you guys stepped up, and then I hear there's going to be an auction as well, that you guys are going to have an auction as well, so that's going to be exciting. I mean, you added so much to the program of everything. And then, again, this is going to be momentous for everyone. I encourage the whole community to participate. If they're not a member yet, like, join us for the event, and you'll find out how to be a member because it's about all of us together that are sharing this. I mean, you guys have done so much with the staff, like to be a real team seamlessly. And no one comes and says, you know, I'm like this role and you're that role. I have seen it in play to get the books, to get the word out, for the social, for our culture, for everything. And then, as everybody is excited at the big thing, is our youth laureate, our very first one. So we are making history together, and that's going to be great for Saturday. And now the live, purchase everybody for the live auction, I believe it is, is it live as well? So can they go online now, Victoria? Or can they, as a wait? Is it live, Brian?
Sorry, the silent auction will be live from 8:00 AM on Wednesday, the 14th, through midnight on Sunday, the 18th. So you can find information on our website, dcpl.org.
Another great way to support our community. So please convey my thanks and excitement for Saturday. And, you know, probably be there early. I know we have to be on Zoom, but as the president says, hopefully soon, we'll be able to be in person. That's going to be fabulous. So even this is great. So looking forward, I'll see you Saturday. Thank you for all your work and everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Mayor, I'd like to share something as well. I just want to briefly just thank Brian and Victoria and everybody at DCPLA for their hard work and being a former library board of trustee, you know. Our, I think, across the nation, you know, libraries are sometimes not the priority. And that's a shame. And because I think that when we think about libraries, they open up the world to everybody. And, you know, and having the poet laureate, the youth poet laureate being announced, I think that one thing that's great about that as well is, you know, I sure that language is the house of being. And when we have our understanding of language and our mastery of words, it creates new understandings and transformations of what you are and what you see in the world. So thank you again.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Doss Mugball. Any other comments? Seeing none, thank you so much. We look forward to joining you this Saturday. Now, we are moving on to proclaiming April 2021 as Employee Appreciation Month. And we have Director Natalie Sakal of Human Resources. So whereas 2021 is Employee Appreciation Month, and Daily City recognizes its 588 employees for their continued hard work and dedication in running the city smoothly and efficiently. And whereas the Office of the City Manager is responsible for the general management and oversight of Daily City's municipal operations and works under the direction of the City Council through the implementation of City Council policies and legislative actions while providing clerical and administrative support, adequate information and recommendations to the council regarding technical and professional issues under policy consideration and implementing council decisions. And whereas the Office of the City Attorney provides legal representation to the mayor, city council, city manager, various departments in the city, city boards and commissions, and is responsible for providing either directly or through outside council for the defense of the city, its officers and employees against lawsuits and claims. And whereas the Office of the City Clerk is in touch with every department in Daily City and records, records, maintains, and archives council actions, posts legal notices and agendas of all public meetings, archives all reports and information presented at the council meetings, as well as manages the acceptance and opening of bids, accepts claims against the city, manages local elections, and processes passports for the community. And whereas the Department of Water and Waste Resource Team of Employees proudly serves the community for providing safe, clean drinking water and protecting the environment by collecting, treating, and disposing of wastewater 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And whereas the Department of Economic and Community Development directs activities that ensure the orderly growth and fulfillment of many of the city's long-range objectives through its core services and provides land use development review, building permit review and inspection, community code enforcement, promotion of economic development, and increasing and maintaining affordable housing. And whereas the Department of Finance and Administrative Services provides the following core services: accounting for all revenue and expenditures of the city, closing the accounting books every month and fiscal year end, creating the operating budgets for the city, securing all business license taxes due to the city, processing the payroll for salaries and benefits for all full-time and hourly city employees, meeting all of the information technology needs of the city, handling all city mail and overseeing the billing of all water and garbage accounts. And whereas the North County Fire Authority responds to all types of fire reports, critical medical incidents and emergency calls. Through state mutual aid, personnel continually step up to assist other cities and counties in needs for weeks and battling wildfire season annually. Where it is, whether it is emergency incident responses, public education, and community outreach programs, operational readiness, or fire prevention, North County Fire Authority continues their commitment and dedication. And whereas the Department of Human Resources provides a full range of services to the city departments, individual employees, the public, retirees, and bargaining groups, including administering employee health and welfare benefit programs and safety programs, administering workers' compensation benefits, administering recruitment and selection process, managing collective bargaining processes and employee relations, overseeing employee training and development, class and compensation issues, and employee recognition and communications. And whereas the Department of Library and Recreation Services continuously serves our neighborhoods and empowers generations by bringing people together to foster community, lifelong learning, and healthy lifestyles through multiple recreation programs and services offered, including free grocery program, workshops, literacy storytimes, and array of classes, as well as the annual city events that include Casa Yahan's, the Daily City Trunk or Treat, Frosty Fest, and the Black History Month Celebration. And whereas the Daily City Police Department personnel are dedicated to providing the highest quality services 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The mission of the sworn staff is to reduce crime and improve the quality of life of our community through collaboration, active enforcement, problem solving, and customer service. And whereas the Department of Public Works provides and maintains the city's facilities and infrastructure for the benefit of the public while working 24/7 to ensure safe operations of our streets, sidewalks, public buildings, parks, traffic signals, streetlights, storm drain system, and vehicle slash equipment, as well as working collaboratively to facilitate new development projects that are safe and sustainable. Now therefore, I, Justin C. Manalo, Mayor, and the members of the City Council do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Employee Appreciation Month, and Daily City recognizing and appreciating the hard work of our employees. Thank you so much for all your work. And I will now hand it over to our Director of Human Resources, Natalie Sakal.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. I am honored to accept the Employee Appreciation Month proclamation on behalf of our amazing workforce. It has been a tumultuous year for all employees, and they have remained dedicated to providing services to the Daily City community. On behalf of all city departments and employees, I thank you again for the acknowledgement. It is greatly appreciated by all.
Thank you so much, Natalie, Director Sakal. And just really want to say thank you to every single employee. I mean, we can't say thank you enough for being able to continually work through the pandemic and just give their effort and time and commitment to the city of Daily City. I see my colleagues, Councilmember Ray Buena Ventura.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I could not help but speak up on this recognition today. You know, I think our staff has done such a tremendous job, and especially obviously during these times of COVID, and the way they have adjusted and made changes to their job and really still getting it done. And I just can't say enough of the efficiency, the continued providing of service, the confidence that our people have in government, because we didn't skip a beat. And we, you all stepped up, and it was tremendous to see that we were really together on this, and it could have easily fallen apart. But I think under the leadership of you, Mayor, also the former mayor, Mr. Sylvester, and certainly the city manager, you all have put such tremendous effort and kept us all together and whole. And I think we are really a grateful city for everything that you all have done. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you. Well, Natalie, I know you're at HR and you've got all those employees, and it's undertaking this year, and each one is adjusted, as my colleagues mentioned, and pivoted without, I know, it seems like overnight things happened. But during the COVID, and then we had other things that came up, but everybody kept going, you know? And then everybody, the city manager, city attorney, and yourself, department heads, workers on the ground, the public works, everyone, you know, was doing their part. And I'm limited, you know, limited, right? Because they were always cut in half anyway. And so they had to do like sometimes things that maybe were never asked of them. Maybe, you know, like the second harvest and meals. And, I mean, there's so much that they did to serve the community, who is truly grateful. And from my grateful heart, I've heard nothing but great things from the elders to everyone else and about how grateful to get food from our own city, our own libraries, our own everything. They came and made books available at the curb, which we can't be without, so they can open up their minds during the COVID period, and serving us, serving us with pride, serving us with courage, and came to work every day and made sure jobs were done and done above and beyond. So applause to all of them. I know they all can't hear us tonight, but when I see them and wave to them, like, you know, wastewater or public works or whomever it is, it's great to see them, and they have a smile on their face and to let them know that we appreciate them, not just today, but every day. And all of yourselves are well. And I know that Leilani, I know that this is, the vacations have been always put on hold for you guys, and you never complained. So hats off to all of them, all 588, even the part-timers, whomever, and the volunteers as well. We've got a lot of volunteers step up with our team. So thanks to all them and community partners. So great, and we should do this more often because you guys deserve it. Great applause, appreciation, gratitude, and love. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. Any other comments? Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm always full of euphemisms, so I'll provide a couple of them tonight. Well, first of all, I'd like to again show and appreciate this proclamation for our staff. It is those members of staff that makes Daily City looks good. And I am proud to be here in Daily City because of our staff. I once asked my boss, how do you know so much? And he responded to me, I don't, but I surround myself with people who do. I say that to say this, everyone, no matter what job you are doing in Daily City, you bring something to the table. And whether it's feedback or providing useful information, we want this to continue. Your ideas to make Daily City more efficient is very important for us to know. From the bottom to the top echelons of our staff, you are all equal as far as I'm concerned. And especially to me is our housekeeping staff. I know I haven't done it, but I can just see, I can go into the office, and when I do, if I pull out the white glove and just wipe it across the tables, there's no dust. I'm proud of that. And that tells me that housekeeping takes a special care of maintaining our buildings. But that's just only housekeeping. I can go down the list and talk about each particular department and how much you are appreciated. But the proclamation says it all. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and keep up the great job. We love you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the, one of the greatest things that we can do for people that keep this city running is thank you. You know, I think one thing that I learned about living in a pandemic with your family, and, you know, you have to wake up early in the morning and make breakfast for them, and then at the same time, doing all these multiple things simultaneously. The only thing that I want, and the only gratitude I want from my children is just a thank you, right? And from the bottom of my heart, I just want to say thank you for everything that you all do. Because a lot of times, people don't recognize or just take for granted, like, the daily operations of the city, everything from water to fire to police to everything, everything that we just take for granted. I just want to say thank you for everything you all do. And, you know, this proclamation isn't just for today, but it's a thank you every single second and every day that we keep this city going. And I just want to acknowledge and say that I see you all. And I appreciate everything that you do for this city. And, you know, without you all, we wouldn't have just the benefits of just like running water, simple things that we take for granted. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much, every, every single employee out there. We are in full gratitude. You know, when reading the proclamation, you know, it definitely shined a light on all the different departments that we have and everything to keep the city running, right? And, and running so smoothly and something that we have never experienced, a global pandemic. So thank you. You are also, you know, on the ground, the face of Daily City when you're doing your, your work, just in the caring ways that you do. And we're all together here as a family in the city of Daily City. So many thanks to every single one of you. And as mentioned, we need more of these to appreciate all the hard work. So thank you so much. And hopefully out of the pandemic, we'll be able to celebrate in person. Now, now moving on to our agenda, I have a motion to approve the regular meeting, the March 22nd, 2021. I'll move to. Okay, I'll second that. Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Now moving to the approval of the agenda, may I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Sylvester, seconded by Councilmember Benaventura. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Now moving on to the consent agenda, I'd like to pull item 11. Are there any other items any of my colleagues would like to pull?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I was going to pull item 11, but thank you for that. And also item 1, 4 and 5, please. Thank you.
With the exception of item 1, 4, 5 and 11, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a first and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. So let's move on to item number one, approving the contract for Ceramante Del Rey Campus Redevelopment EIR consultant.
I believe Carmelis is going to give a presentation on that item.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Morales.
Evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'll just briefly speak on the proposed contract approval. So this is for the Ceramante Del Rey Campus Redevelopment EIR, which is the Environmental Impact Report. And we are asking the City Council to authorize the City Manager to execute a contract with David J. Powers and Associates, Inc. so that they can prepare the EIR for this project. It's estimated to be approximately $142,200. I mean, $142,200. Just some background information on this project. We are awaiting submittal of the, of the formal application. We're expecting to receive it sometime this week or in the coming weeks. And it will be for a major redevelopment of the Ceramante Del Rey Campus to include up to 1,235 multifamily residential units, some space for the Head Start preschool, as well as neighborhood serving retail and open space in Parklands. If you remember, in 2019, City Council did approve a faculty and staff housing project on the same site, which is currently under construction. And JUHST is expecting to complete the full build out within about eight to 10 years, potentially up to 15 years, depending on the economy. So for this approval, what we did was we released a request for proposal to over 25 consultants. And we received two proposals. And upon review of the two proposals, we determined David J. Powers and Associates demonstrated the most requisite experience in preparing the EIR. It was also the least costly of the two proposals, which is an added advantage for the school district who will be paying for the expense of this EIR. And David J. Powers was essentially selected just because of their experience with, within the environmental regulatory environment in the Bay Area. They worked on many environmental documents within Daily City as well as the Bay Area. Most notably, the, like I mentioned, the faculty and staff housing project on the same site. So they're very familiar with the environmental impacts. As mentioned earlier, the expense is going to be paid by the project applicant, so there's no expense to the city. And in summary, we ask that the City Council authorize the City Manager to execute the contract with David J. Powers for the contract amount of $142,200. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any questions. We also have a representative from David J. Powers, a co-nee Danielson, if you have any questions for him, as well as some representatives from the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales, for that presentation. At this point, are there any questions for my colleagues? If not, let's look to see if there are any public comment on this particular item.
Yes, I'll reserve my comment till after. Thank you, public comment. Thank you.
Yes, I'm not sure if I was supposed to submit something, but I'd like to speak on behalf as a Washoe member of the Nevada California Tribe and representing Alonee people.
Deborah, we'll get started in just a second and I will call your name.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we open up to public comment at this time.
I think we're not, it's not a public hearing, so. But thank you.
Okay, Mayor, would you like me to proceed?
Yes, any, anyone that has a public comment for this item, thank you.
Okay, so for everyone in our meeting, please use the raised, raise hand feature to indicate that you would like to speak and I will call your name. Just remember to unmute yourself before you start speaking and to state your full name for our record. And you will have two minutes and you can watch the timer on the screen to judge that. If you are calling in by phone, you should press star nine to raise your hand. Okay, so I see Tina Van Raphorst, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Manalo and Councilmembers. I am Tina Van Raphorst. I'm the Associate Superintendent for Jefferson Union High School District. And thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Before you tonight is an agreement with David J. Powers to perform an environmental impact review of our property at Ceramante Del Rey. As you are aware, we have conducted a series of community outreach, outreach meetings in December about the ideas we have to develop this rundown property that would allow us to generate much needed funds for the school district. There were, an overwhelming majority of the participants in our meeting were supportive of this revitalization effort. And there are a few community members that are interested in preserving some of our adult school garden. We've been meeting with them regularly and I think that maybe who also may want to speak tonight. When we talk with them, we talk about the future green spaces for the property as well as the environmental review process. And so I am very excited to have this be before you tonight. We look forward to learning what the environmental review would find and so we can share that with our community partners. And we look forward to discussing the future of the property with our community members. I wanted to let you know that I'm here tonight to answer any questions the council may have about this project. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next will be Nick Ochi Pinti, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, so thank you for adjusting this item. First of all, I want to say that as a member of the high school board and this project being on our agenda, I am the only member not in support of the way it's moving forward and in general. First of all, just to echo some of the comments we probably hear later in this meeting. It is one of the only green spaces we have. We have a community garden, a garden that is, has been cultivated on our district land for years and has served a part of our community in terms of an educational resource for our students with special needs and in general, as well as one of the few green spaces that we have left in our city. Just to underscore the, the importance and I think the gravity of something like that. We have a new Secretary of the Interior, Debbie Highland. She is an indigenous Native American woman and has expressed, as has the President and many people in the Cabinet, need to expand green spaces in line with the Green New Deal and the kind of progress we're seeing with the American Jobs Act and discussion around that on a national level. We should be working in our capacity to do everything we can to preserve these spaces. That said, this project looks to build five new buildings, one of which is projected to be affordable housing, the other four to be market rate. Seeing the, the growth of development in terms of market rate housing in our area, there is no need for that here that I can see. Although I'm supportive of affordable housing, I'm not supportive at the expense of environment, the green spaces that we have left. And in that vein, the same rule applying to Thorn Beach and the land that we have there. So in the interest of national, state and local guidelines around smart growth, I highly encourage us to pause and consider that we preserve the garden there at the very least because there is no need to do that, especially not even for, you know, the interest of revenue, which our district is actually in a good financial place and better than we have in years. Thank you for consideration.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next we will have Kalima Salahoudin and after that will be Deborah Santiago.
Hello, Madam Mayor and the members of the council. Thanks for giving us the time to speak today. I am a member of the subcommittee that's working on this project. And this is just for the EIR report. And there's a lot of valid points that were raised by my colleague. And this will help us make those informed decisions. You know, that's the reason why we have environmental impact reports. I also agree that we need to preserve green space. And for the council members that have been part of this, getting updates, you know that we are committed to preserving the green space. We have that built in to the build out so that we will, there will not be a loss of green space. There is conversation that we were instructed to continue to have conversations with Deborah and the folks that are part of the city garden. And as you know, when we're asked to do something, I always hold true to my word and that is what we have been doing and we hope to continue to do that. But part of those negotiations and part of that process is having the EIR report so I can use that. And when we're talking about different aspects of the garden and the overall land in totality. So I'm hoping that we don't stop the process and really halt us and enable to have those negotiations and continue to talk and that the ER is approved. You know, in terms of our fiscal situation, we, as you know, have been given COVID relief funds from the federal government. Those are finite, they have to be spent. We're talking about the long-term fiscal health of the district and we are one of the lowest funded high school districts in San Mateo County. We have been a bedrock during the COVID-19 crisis for the community and we want to continue to do so. So I thank you for your support and I hope that you approve the EIR. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next up is Deborah Santiago, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Thank you very much, council members and everybody of Daily City, City Hall. Yes, I am a Washoe member of Nevada California Tribe and also a community member within Daily City. And also I represent the Rimutish Alonee Tribe, which is the territories of San Francisco, Daily City, Pacifica, all to San Mateo County down. And, you know, it's brought to our attention. And yes, the green space is essential to this area because a lot of it is all natural and we'd like to keep part of that in pat. So we are looking at the company that was brought forward, David J. Bowers, to make sure they are in compliance with the Heritage California Tribes, to make sure the environmental studies report were reflected in a, in a good favor all the way around. So we ask at this time that this also be with looking at our favors as Californ tribes and the community members within Campus Drive and surrounding areas. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. The next person is Maria Pham, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Good evening, everybody. My name is Maria Pham and I'm a parent with a kid going into the high school district and, and one older kid that is in the high school district. And so I just want the City Council to know that this garden is very special. It's been there for two decades and, and I'm not against the school district developing the, the space. But if they could please plan around this garden so they can preserve the garden. There's a lot of people from the Ceramante Ridge, which apparently are apartment that the school district already owns. And I think it would be a great loss if, if they build over this garden. It's, it's a beautiful, wonderful place with a lot of history. Thank you for your time. Sorry about the unmuting thing.
Thank you for your comments, Maria. The next person is Shaquille Ali.
Thank you very much. I would like to speak in solidarity with the indigenous person who spoke and mentioned that this is Alonee land and also we know the Miwak Nation lived out in this region as well. And I just want to commend everyone involved for hopefully taking seriously this environmental impact report. And I urge the council and the district to take seriously the issue of green space in Daily City and think about not just preserving green space, but actually increasing green space. And hopefully, you know, we'll have a good outcome from this. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next is Mia. Please unmute yourself and state your full name for the record.
Hi, my name is Maya Elgrico. I'm talking, or I'm commenting today as a concerned youth in Daily City. I grew up with this Daily City garden and I would hate to see it go to waste and also to further back up. An Alonee elder that spoke just recently, I stand in solidarity. And I think that we should really rethink building this thing because this, this garden is really important to your community. I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that has not raised their hand yet? Okay, there is one person, Alan Katz. Please unmute yourself.
There we are. Thank you. I have been working with the, the district now for a couple of years on this project and do want to point out that we've had many public discussions with the entire community, including having, during COVID, having sent out letters and had public meetings, both citywide and locally, to talk through these issues and to be aware of them and to, to think about how best to represent the, the many varied states. And to think about how best to represent the many varied stakeholders in the district rather than just any specific group. So we'd like to, you know, continue this dialogue we are having with the representatives who you've heard from tonight, plus the remainder of the many individuals who we would be talking to as we program what we have referred to as a central green. We know the scoping session would be roughly a month from now for the CIR, which is a very important session. We would hope that perhaps the President of David J. Powers, who I believe would be receiving the award tonight, could talk a little bit within a two-minute timeframe about how, if I could ask him a question, how he reviews and what is actually reviewed in terms of the cultural resources and the biological resources on the site to make sure everyone's comments tonight have been heard. So that would be my question if that could be answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Mayor, I do not see anyone else with their hand raised right now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stolti on that. So there are no other comments at this point. Is there? Hello? Is there any other comments from my colleagues? I do have one question in regards to, I know the development is down the pipeline, but has there been interaction with the school members and the community members that are, you know, wanting to retain the open space? Has there been, I'm just curious if there's been dialogue with one another? I would ask any of...
Yes, there was. During our sessions, we asked the community what they were interested in in terms of open space. And there were things such as tot lots and childcare facilities, meaning childcare, I mean, older swing sets and such areas that they can socialize and meet with friends. There were, I believe, two people, including one or both on the session tonight, who talked about retaining the community garden. And I believe in discussions with JUHSD, there's no problem retaining the community garden. It's just, you know, we have to understand what the real needs are and how can it be self-supporting? And really, what would be an appropriate size for a community garden? Vis a vis the demonstration garden, which is currently on the site since, you know, the last decade plus, decade and a half, to service the adult education. And the master planning effort that JUHSD is undertaking currently is to consider moving the demonstration garden that Deborah and others are volunteers for to Westmore. So there's no intent to eliminate it, but they want to make sure the school district, as I understand, and I don't mean to speak for, you know, the board members here.
Yes, really quickly to jump in here. Just to answer your question specifically, Mayor Manalo, yes, we, and we're continuing to have those meetings. So we've been meeting, we've met multiple times since you've asked, you directly asked us to do so, and so we were following through on that direction. We've met multiple times about the current use of the garden and the extended use of the garden. So those are two different conversations and we're trying to have those simultaneously and those conversations will continue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Actually, Mayor Manalo, if I may. Just to speak to...
Actually, I think on this item, it should just be for, I mean, just it's myself and Trustee Lee that are on the subcommittee and then have been meeting. So we're the two that are authorized to speak on this particular item.
Okay, Trustee Saladin, respectfully, this is a public meeting at the city council. And to answer Mayor Manalo's question, you're asking if those who had not been consulted or those who are not necessarily in favor of the project have been consulted. I can answer that question for you. The answer is no. What I have received has been presented at public meetings maybe once or twice. In either case, I voted no recently and prior information which was requested has to date not been provided. It has been withheld or edited. There is actually a video from the community input meeting, which I believe Mr. Katz commented on at one of our public meetings. However, upon my request months ago, it still has not been provided. It is actually a heavily edited meeting. The community input was in fact about 10 members of the community, which was not well attended. We don't know their input because those parts of the video were edited out or I was told they weren't recorded, which I'm not sure I completely can ascertain or believe at this point. What I can say is this, that those discussions are ongoing. The community garden is not what we call a demonstration garden. It's a little disrespectful to call any garden a demonstration garden, but it is a garden and has been cultivated for years. We in fact have redwood trees which have been planted in the backside of that area, which is against the hill, supporting housing. Where we know if we're taking down trees, it could adversely affect, which I'm sure the EIR will show. That said, this space has become kind of...
I have a quick question. Mr. Ochi Pinti, who are you speaking on? You're not speaking on the Jefferson Union High School Board. Are you with a group?
I am speaking on behalf of my job, my role as a trustee with the Jefferson Union High School District Board. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Facilities Committee, which Trustee Salahuddin spoke to. What I am here to talk about is, as another elected official on our high school board, the interests of our community, which I have heard among those, some of those who you've heard here tonight at this meeting. So my interests aren't the same as any community member observing our environment, our green spaces. And of course, our educational facilities, even if they have been volunteer run, in the interest of expanding the kind of things that our city and school district are looking at investing in. Things that you cannot build back or replant in another place. To allege, or to kind of say that you can replant a garden in another site. While it's nice to continue planting, we should be expanding green spaces. To destroy one green space and say that we're simply going to compensate by building it somewhere is a little bit absurd. But I do want to say that I am speaking as a trustee.
Thank you for that. I think that was over two minutes, but allotted you the timeframe to speak. You know, what's being decided right now is the approval for the EIR, right? And so, and was mentioned prior that I think the community garden was brought up in the past around how can the district work with community members? And, you know, having that conversation and I hear it's happening. I mean, if there's, I think, an opportunity to continue that dialogue with, you know, one another, I think it's very important. You know, I mean, I hear it. I hear that, you know, this has been something that has been there for over, what, 20 years or whatnot? But then there's also, you know, we're looking at ways to build more housing, right? I mean, and so, you know, I think previously it was brought upon, can both groups continue the dialogue and work through this? I'm hearing there was a community meeting that was done, but I'm also hearing that it was just one meeting. So that's not many, no more than one. So I think what would be helpful is to provide insight around the community outreach and input that has been done from the last time we had approved and moved forward with this project.
Mayor Manalo, if I may. Just to shed some light on to what would happen next if we were to authorize the contract. This would basically start the environmental review process and David J. Powers would be on board. And we would send out what we call a notice of preparation. And that basically gives anyone who wants to comment on the project, specifically regarding the environmental impacts, to comment within a 30-day time period. And David J. Powers will also assist us with a scoping meeting, which will better define the scope of the ER. So the conversation will definitely continue and it's great that to hear, there's a lot of feedback already. But I just don't want people to think that this is the end of the conversation. There's definitely going to be more room and time, especially with this formal application. It's going to go through several public hearings and it's going to come in different forms and eventually it'll hopefully come in the form that is accepted by the city council.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. I think what would be very helpful is if that timeline is provided for community members, so then they know kind of what, you know, what those steps are and that there is opportunity for more feedback. I think that that would be helpful.
If I may, Mayor, so we actually been locked out of the garden for almost four weeks now. So the fruit trees and a lot of the things growing there are going to die if we don't get to come in and water. And then, so it's kind of hard to work with the school district because we were asked to fill out the paperwork to become volunteers so we could come in and water. But as of now, I haven't heard anything back from the school district. I've completed my fingerprint, my TB test. And I mean, it is pretty dry in California. Things are going to start dying in the garden, you know. So is it possible that maybe we can get permission to go in and water while we continue this dialogue?
Thank you, Ms. Pham, for that insight. I think that that's with the district. That's not in our prerogative, but it's a question with the district in regards to the access to to the garden. And so I don't know how, and that's why I'm saying, has there been direct communication with the groups? And I know that you're a volunteer. So that's something that I think the district can work with you directly with. Is there someone that?
Yeah, it's not probably appropriate for me to just jump in, but I will give you a call tomorrow, Maria. I talked with Debbie today.
Okay, thank you so much. And you should have all my information in the paperwork.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add one more thing to Ms. Morales. And I want to make sure that when you send the BC Heritage California Tribe list, that everybody gets that. Because last time, nobody received that list. That's why they've asked me to represent. And so that's why I'm here. Also, I'm not opposed to the building. I'm just opposing of what's going to happen to that garden. And we did put through at least saving part of that garden. And we had given that to the school district to let them know that and to Tina. And we have been having small meetings here and there. But at the same time, we're looking at that respect as native and indigenous people of the land. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Santiago. And thank you, everyone, for the discussion and clarification. I think one thing is very important to continue those conversations as mentioned, especially around this community asset that people care about. And so it seems like there is dialogue. I hear that Ms. Van Ruphorst is working with Maria. I also know that there's more community meetings down the pipeline. And I hope that everyone would continue to work with one another. I think it was mentioned by Ms. Santiago to just make sure that members of her tribe have information regarding next steps and meetings. At this point, I will now open up to my colleagues.
Madam Mayor, may I, since I pulled the item, please? Thank you. Yeah, so you guys have had the dialogue. My specific questions also are, by doing this EIR, I guess it's to our staff, since I'm not on the Ad Hoc Committee for this, or the Subcommittee for this, when it was laid out in the report, has all those, Michael and Ms. Morales, has all those decisions been made already? And what the plan is already? For this site? That were mentioned in the staff report? The specific number of homes, the layout, or is this still discussion?
So those were the parameters that were provided to us by the school district. They did a pre-application process and we just verified a few things, but it definitely is fluid. Basically, what they're applying for is a precise plan, which would set limits for the types of uses and the development that they could do on the property. And then similar to other planned developments that we have in Daly City, such as like ceremony, et cetera. They would come in for an additional design review approval for each building that they construct. So I think they're just giving us the total amount of units. It could definitely change. We haven't received the formal application yet. So the final number may be different from what's written in the staff report. We would be able to provide more information on that. Once we get the application, there will also be a preliminary plan that we'll present to you in the planning commission. So you can sort of provide feedback as to what you think should be changed. But yeah, definitely nothing is set in stone at this moment. I think those are just their current estimates.
And then included in that, Ms. Morales, with the EIR and the garden discussion, how is the garden included in this EIR? Is that like part of this particular plan? Obviously, we're going to do the whole site, which is, you know, really good idea anyway, which I know that staff has recommended. So what I wanted to know is, how is that implementing in the garden of this EIR report?
The specifics of the garden, that's not really a detail that was presented to us in the pre-application. We only know that there's going to be a certain amount of open space and parklands. So like I mentioned, if, once we receive a formal application, we'll see if there's, it's included in the plan. But if it's not, of course, we can have a discussion about that. It's still, I'm sure, I'm sure the school district has a plan for what they decide to do. We just haven't seen the site plan just yet.
So it's kind of, all this is really preliminary, other than we just need to do the environmental, as recommended by staff, the EIR report, so we can move forward from there to the next steps, correct?
Yeah, so the district did want to get started on the EIR because that does take quite a long time, especially the public input process. So they started on that before they submitted the application.
Okay, and then there's, because I got several phone calls also from the community. So I wanted to make sure that their questions were answered as well. And then it's good to hear that they're having conversations with the school district. And then I appreciate the school district trustees, there's a Subcommittee, the members of the public and those who are communicating with the indigenous people in our community as well. So I appreciate that and I appreciate the staff. And then if we approve the EIR, then things are still fluid in the planning, but then we can move forward. Thank you, Ms. Morales, and thank you, Michael.
Just for the point of clarity, the city council is not approving the EIR tonight. The city council's being asked to approve the consultant who will begin work on the EIR.
Thank you very much. So thank you very much and thank you to the staff and everyone. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Now, these are just basically some questions and comments that I have. They don't need to be answered this evening, but I'll put it out there. Everyone knows I don't hold back any punches. First of all, getting involved with land issues, I really hate to be involved with land issues. Especially when you have someone who owns land and they want to change what goes on their land. Having the ability to have the garden over the years was basically, I would say, a privilege and not a right. But the biggest question I have is why now for approval of an EIR? I feel this should have been done a long time ago, to which it would include, you know, traffic patterns and community outreach and et cetera. So I'm concerned. If we had this before, perhaps we would have had further and in-depth discussions and we would have to make the hard decision. So I talked about land... So I talked about land, wondering why. And I want to talk about the maintenance. I'm thinking that maintenance should be done on this garden until it is decided upon as to what's going to happen with that garden. One of the options I've heard is moving the garden. Now, you know, I'm just surmising, do we want the current plants and what's there to die? And that would make an easier decision to move it? I'm totally against that. We need to maintain maintenance on that garden until such time the school district decides what is going to be done. Now, I want to let council, my colleagues know that I've worked and I believe in full and complete transparency. And I've worked with Ms. Salahuddin and Lee over the past year, and I think this is an outstanding project. Outstanding, something that I still believe to this very day is going to be a model for San Mateo County as one of the first. So kudos. And in working with both Ms. Salahuddin and Lee, I've heard of some of the community issues. I brought it to their attention. And as Ms. Salahuddin said earlier, she looked into every one of them. So I have complete trust that there's not going to be any stone unturned. There may be some negotiations. We have to come to a happy medium. I strongly believe in green space. And not everyone is going to get what they want. With a happy negotiation between all parties involved, especially in the community, I think is very, very important. We have to be good neighbors. So I have complete trust. So with that all being said, let's see, oh, there was a mention about video. Well, I don't see anything where a video has to be provided to the entire community. I'm sure I was not there. No promises were being made, but basically, folks were being heard. So that's the dialogue that we should continue to have. So with that being said, this is to take a vote on approving the contract to get started with this E I R and so that we can document everything and have it documented so that we can make that decision later as to what concessions, what's going to be done, and it gives the community a chance to see both sides. But you have to remember, everyone has an agenda. So you put yourself in the shoes of the community, you put yourself in the shoes of the developer, you put yourself in the shoes of the school board. So could you imagine? And there are some people I am missing. So this is going to be a very difficult process, but we have to move forward. Housing is our number one priority in Daly City, but at the same time, we want to strive to keep everyone happy. It is better to have a piece of the pie than no pie at all. So I hope as we move forward, that we can iron out or work something out so that everyone would be happy and we can get the project that we've been waiting so long to get. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. If there are no other comments at this point, I will entertain a motion to adopt the approval for the contract for Ceremony Del Rey Campus redevelopment E I R consultant and ensuring that there is continued dialogue with community.
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Okay, Vice Mayor, second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. D Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Lynn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. For the record, there was a motion, I did say just to, in that motion said that continued dialogue with the community was added. Just to make, just clarification.
Noted.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, I want to thank you, Ms. Morales and Mr. Van Lukhousen for your presentation. And I want to thank the Jefferson Union High School Board of Trustees for being here and staff and all the community members that provided public comment. Moving on to item number four, accepting and appropriating six hundred twenty thousand eight hundred in Measure A and W grant funds from the pedestrian and bicycle program cycle five for the John Daly Boulevard Skyline Boulevard Pedestrian Connection Project.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is accept and appropriate six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, eight hundred dollars in Measure A and Measure W grant funds for the John Daly Boulevard Skyline Pedestrian Connection Project. In August of two thousand and twenty, the Transportation Authority issued a call for projects for pedestrian and bicycle program grant funds. The goal of the program is to fund projects that improve bicycling and pedestrian accessibility and safety in San Mateo County. In September of two thousand and twenty, public works staff submitted an application for the infrastructure project under the pedestrian and bicycle program for the John Daly Boulevard Skyline Pedestrian Connection Project. We requested six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, eight hundred dollars in grant funds. And in January of two thousand and twenty-one, the Transportation Authority selected Daly City, the John Daly Boulevard Skyline Pedestrian Connection Project for grant funding in the full amount of six hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred dollars. This project will construct a sidewalk along John Daly Boulevard from the Westlake neighborhood to the intersection of John Daly Boulevard and Skyline Boulevard. This will improve the access to Thornton State Beach. The sidewalk gap was identified as a priority project in the city's recently adopted pedestrian and bicycle master plan. The total cost of the project is estimated to be seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. This includes design, construction, and construction engineering. If approved, the action will appropriate the six hundred twenty thousand eight hundred dollars in grant funds and will appropriate another one hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred dollars of unallocated Measure A funds for the project's required local match. So in summary, staff is recommending that the city council accept and appropriate the six hundred twenty thousand eight hundred dollars in grant funds from the Transportation Authority for the bicycle, pedestrian bicycle program cycle five fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. Also to authorize the city manager or her doesn't need to execute the funding agreement and other documents necessary for grant fund reimbursement. And then finally, to appropriate one hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred dollars of unallocated Measure A funds for the local match. Staff is available to provide any additional information desired by the council members. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Chu, for that presentation. Are there any of my colleagues, I think, Councilmember D Giovanni, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, because we're recognizing the employees and all the staff, this is to highlight, just for the community, how much you do in that department to get grants for the safety, for everything we do for improvements, Mr. Chu, you and your staff, where I know that diligently. And if people don't realize that it's a lot grant funded in your department and in our other areas. So I just wanted to do that to thank you, because it's exciting to see that one and the next item highlighted on what it takes and you got awarded the full amount. That's incredible. So bravo to the staff and for yourself as being the director of that department. But it proves that you guys work hard, you see our needs, and it works. So thank you very much. It's just an evening of commendations for another great department. So thank you very much, and thank you, Madam Mayor. It's gonna be great for safety issues on that corridor.
Thank you, Councilmember D Giovanni and Director Chu for that presentation. Do we have any public comment on this, Mr. Stolti?
If anyone would like to make a comment on this particular agenda item, please use the raise hand feature. Looks like we have two so far, and the first person, let me just share my screen real quick. The first person will be Nick Ochi Penti, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to say I'm excited to see this project moving forward. I know projects like this have been in the works with our city, different places in terms of upgrading and updating streets in terms of speed limits and different things. In the interest of, I think, just providing community resources and ways to access them, especially some of our our local treasures like Thornton Beach Vista, and the little that we can access through the turnaround and the paths there is a great opportunity. That said, just in the spirit of my prior comments as well, in preserving green spaces here in Daly City, I know this has been an ongoing development in terms of each phase of looking into the development of that area. I would urge that we preserve what we have left of our Thornton Beach Cliff area and any access to that and urge reconsideration of, you know, basically, I know decisions haven't been made yet, but in terms of allowing exploration of whether or not the cliff is stable, knowing that our city was started based on an earthquake just outside of the cliff here in the Daly City area, should be enough cause to give us pause on that decision. But I think this would be an amazing idea and looking forward to it so that we can have people actually be a part of our community and share that green space and open space. And I would further encourage the city to consider maybe buying that land in terms of a public land trust or something to that effect. So we can figure what little space we have left and build on that because it is an asset to our community and definitely something that we should be sharing here locally with our, the rest of our big area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Shaquille Ali.
Thanks. I'm happy to hear about these developments and that we will have the money to, you know, improve the bike lanes and bike access. I remember this is something that former council member Mike Engona was a big proponent of as well. So I'm glad to see the progress that's been made. And just want to remind people and also reiterate what Ms. Ochi Pini said or trustee Ochi Pini said about green space in that area and that, you know, there's plans in San Francisco to change the whole way that the Great Highway is accessed. Eventually, there's only going to be one lane because the ocean is taking the earth back. So I know that there's plans to make a trail that accesses Ocean Beach from Fort Funston. And so I just urge the city to find out what San Francisco is doing as well and be in solidarity with whatever we can do to preserve access to green space and recreation in our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Melinda Dart, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor and council members. I'm so happy to hear about these improvements as well and access to the beach. Just a reminder, this is of course Earth Day Month. And the last time I was down there at the beach, a resident showed, shared with me his photos of baby owls fledging out of their nest down there. It's just an incredible opportunity we have there with that bit of coast for students and residents both to access nature and learn about it. So I hope that you can all keep Thornton Beach in your thoughts this busy month and be prepared to be creative in the future to save this bit of coastal ecosystem for all of our students, for all of our children, and all of the residents of our city. Thank you so much.
Okay, and that concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you so much for everyone commenting on this item. And thank you for staff for your presentation on this. So at this moment, I move to approve accepting and appropriating six hundred twenty thousand eight hundred in Measure A and W grant funds from the pedestrian and bicycle program cycle five for the John Daly Boulevard Skyline Boulevard Pedestrian Connection Project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, may we have roll call, please? Thank you, Ms. Councilmember D Giovanni. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. D Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Lynn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much. Item eleven? Item eleven is a resolution in support of the right to stay home and to encourage landlords to apply to the state emergency rental assistance program.
Mayor, did you want to do item number five first? I think that was also cool.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, item number five before item number eleven. Thank you for that, Director Chu. Item number five, accepting and appropriating fifty thousand dollars in Measure A and W grant funds from the pedestrian and bicycle program cycle five for the Vision Zero Community Outreach Program. Director Chu.
Okay, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. This will be short. This is another grant with the same program as part of the pedestrian and bicycle program cycle five. We also had the opportunity to apply for a non-infrastructure grant. And so we applied for the Vision Zero Community Outreach Program. As as council is aware, we did recently approve the Vision Zero Plan last year. And part of that plan is to do community outreach. So we applied for a fifty thousand dollar grant with the Transportation Authority. And again, the city was approved for the full amount of fifty thousand dollars to do outreach for our Vision Zero Action Plan. The total cost is estimated to be a hundred thousand dollars. So it will be fifty thousand dollars from the grant. And then there's another fifty thousand dollar local match. We do have sufficient funds. And the request would be to transfer fifty thousand from the fiscal year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one C I P account from the Transportation Fund. So in summary, staff is recommending that council accept and appropriate fifty thousand dollars of Measure A and W grant funds from the San Mateo County Transportation Authority's pedestrian and bicycle program cycle five fiscal years two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. And then also authorize the city manager or her doesn't need to execute the funding agreement and other documents necessary for the grant fund reimbursement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Director Chu. At this moment, are there any other comments? I think Councilmember D Giovanni.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chu. Another highlight. Another highlight, like I know these are on consent agenda, but I think it's important for the public to know that a lot of these things are done through grants and they're not coming out of our general fund. And they really are improving the lives and the quality of life and the safety for the community members here. When on a daily basis, they probably don't know and maybe they think the money comes out of our general fund or how they get the money, but it's not. It's for the grant writers, it's our Transportation Authority, it's the people in your department writing the grants, Mr. Chu, it's yourself and all the hard work that are seeking these grants and ongoing grants that make our quality of life better for our community. So thank you to your staff, to yourself, and to the Transportation Authority as well for recognizing our needs and that the utilization of Vision Zero in our community. So thank you. That's all. I just want to make sure that the people in our home know that these are highlights in our community. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Di Giovanni. And so are there any other comments from my colleagues? Seeing no comments, entertain a motion to approve this item.
Motion to approve item number five, consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. We have roll call, please.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Hi.
Dr. Rod?
Hi.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Hi.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, hi.
Ms. Manalo?
Hi, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Director Chu. And moving on to item number 11. Item number 11 is the resolution in support of the right to stay home and to encourage landlords to apply to the state emergency rental assistance program. And I pulled this item specifically because I wanted to share with everyone that I brought this resolution forth with working with Faith in Action, who brought to my attention that many landlords were not applying for the program with the state. So this resolution is really to encourage landlords to apply to the state emergency rental assistance program. And so if property owners choose to apply to the program, they can receive up 80% of an eligible tenant's rent debt if they agree to forgive the other 20%. And so this is really an opportunity for, you know, tenants to remain in their homes and get relief from really what has transpired through COVID. And so I believe that, you know, the city of Daly City can help with the promotion of the program and that we can work hand in hand with community-based organizations like Faith in Action. I just wanted to give a premise of the item on the agenda. Thank you very much. If there are any public comment at this time or any questions from my colleagues?
Yeah, I have a comment. For me.
Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you. I believe that this is an excellent resolution to, and it's a different type of resolution to address the issues with landlords. But other than community groups, I want to point out that this is a two-way street. In order for landlords to apply to get up to 80% and to forgive 20%, the tenants must comply and provide the information as requested from the landlord so that they may apply for such funds. So it works both ways, and I just wanted to make that point clear as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. If there's no other comments from my colleagues, I will open it up to public comment.
Madam Mayor, I'll wait till after public comment. Thank you.
Okay, for any members of the public that would like to comment this evening, and I know we have a number of people with us tonight for this specific item, please use the raise hand feature. I also want to let you know that we do have a translator here at our meeting. His name is Victor. And he will be able to help if anyone requires translation from Spanish to English. For anyone that needs a translator, we will extend your time beyond the two minutes.
Thank you so much, Stephen. Just one comment for those of you that are not speaking so that there's not any echoes, kindly mute if you're not speaking. Thank you very much.
Okay, I will start at the top of the list with people that have their hands raised. The first is Carolina Parelles, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Good evening, so glad to say that, and happy Easter to all of you. My name is Carolina Parelles. I'm a community organizer with Faith in Action Bay Area. And I have been working with low-income families in Daly City for the last four years. The more we span our conversations and strengthen our relationship throughout the city, the issue of the high cost of housing is never missing on these conversations with parents, teachers, principals, nurses, and members of the clergy serving in different congregations. Today, we are very pleased that the resolution for the people and by the people of Daly City, the right to stay home made it to the agenda and hopefully it's going to be approved with an unanimous vote. But this is just the first step to a path we would like to build with you to make sure residents of Daly City can truly have a right to stay in their community. They make it strong. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person is Shereen. If you could state your full name for the record.
Sure. I know it's not an easy last name. Thank you, Mr. Stolt, Mayor Manalo, honorable city council members and city staff. My name is Shereen Malik of Zali. I'm a resident of Daly City and I am speaking today in solidarity with all those who are struggling to keep a roof over their heads and those of their children and loved ones as they struggle, as many of us do with the current challenges of the pandemic. And I'm just really grateful for, one, the state ERAP program and the offering that this enables us to do because so many of renters right now are deep in debt as they've tried to keep this roof over their family's heads. And what we need is landlords to be aware of this program. I don't think enough landlords are aware that this exists and the time that it takes to apply is not too onerous and could be an opportunity to really pay back a full 80% of the back rent and enable the renters not to be in a situation where they are in debt. I also want to appreciate the city specifically resolving to support that tenants have a right to stay in their homes during COVID without fear from eviction or impending debt. We have to recognize how difficult of a situation COVID is and to have the fear of potentially losing your housing is very difficult during this time. Encouraging property owners is critical and I think anything that city staff can be doing or community partners and members of the community, we would be happy to help. That accumulation is really putting a difficult situation for our families and memorializing the importance of eradicating that and is incredibly important. So thank you very much for all the support and I encourage you to vote yes on this resolution.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Eva Reyes.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Eva Reyes. I'm a community organizer with Faith in Action Bay Area and I've worked with families in Daly City. I'm commenting today to express the urgency and the need of supporting this resolution and not just the urgency and need of supporting this resolution, but continuing to build a path forward for residents to stay in their homes safely. It is essential that we move forward now before more people are forced into debt, forced to leave school and forced to leave the safety of their homes. This resolution is really just the first step for us to stop our evictions, encourage landlords to support their tenants, and build a broader, safer foundation for Daly City. Furthermore, unfortunately, the ERAP Assistance Program is the bare minimum at this point when the program is 30 pages for tenants to fill out and often is too confusing and is not offered in the language that they speak when they need to fill it out. I appreciate the time you're giving us, but we really do need you to stand up for Daly City and show landlords what they should be doing in building this foundation for us to keep our families safe. That is it. I hope you pass the resolution and I hope that you continue to do work to make sure that things like this don't keep happening and we don't have to come to these city council meetings every Monday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Eduardo Gonzalez.
Hi, good evening, city staff, Mayor Manalo and city council. My name is Eduardo Lalo Gonzalez and I live here in Daly City. I'm here to express my strong support of the resolution in support of the right to stay home and to encourage landlords to apply to the state emergency rental assistance program. I'm standing in solidarity with tenants facing evictions and steep financial debt. The resolution is the right step to make sure community members that have lived here for years still have a place to call home. Please continue to provide support to the tenants of this community by passing the resolution and making sure you are taking the lead in preventing further displacement. This pandemic has already caused so much pain and loss and affected seniors, youth, and families alike. Again, please be part of the first step to make sure residents in Daly City stay here. And would also be great to continue your assistance by providing resources and support to those that can help tenants fill out the forms as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is S21 Day Andrea, if you could unmute yourself and state your full name.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. Absolutely.
Buenas noches. My name is Andrea Masariegos. Vivo aquí en Westlake, en el apartamento cinco. He vivido aquí por seis años. Y estoy aquí para pedir el apoyo de la alcaldesa a que nos apoye.
Okay.
Despacio, Andrea.
So, gracias. Good evening. My name is Andrea Mascareva. I live here at Westlake Apartments, apartment number five. I've lived here for six years. And I'm here to ask for the support from the mayor so that she can help us adelante. Okay, gracias. And I also, you know, want to say that I don't have any work and things have been really hard with this pandemic. And so I just want to ask the support from the mayor to help us. I live with my three kids and we really need the support in this situation with this pandemic. Thank you and good evening.
Okay, the next person is Nani Friedman.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Manalo and council members. My name is Nani Friedman and I work with Faith in Action Bay Area, in particular, supporting the tenants at Westlake. And over half of the tenants of Westlake Village, 1,500 families, have left due to the fear of not being able to pay rent and constant pressure and threats to pay rent. Current eviction protections from the state have been insufficient to keep Daly City families at home as more and more people accumulate rent debt and need to deal with the pressure and and insecurity that that causes. And so we ask you to take an active role to keep families at home, starting with passing this resolution as a first step and through a continued commitment to protecting the tenants here in Daly City. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. The next person. You know what, let's go with Reyna Lagos, if you'd like to speak.
Okay, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Reyna Lagos.
Good evening. My name is Reyna Lagos.
Vivo en Westlake Apartment.
I live in Westlake Apartments. Sorry, my family's been affected by COVID? I've lost work and I'm a senior. And we need the help, all the people that live here in Westlake in supporting us. So there's been a lot of evictions with people because they're unable to pay the rent?
Que nos ayuden.
So we, and we need support for this passing of this law that will help. And there are a lot of families here with kids, so it truly is a sad situation. So I'm completely lost with all of this, so that'll be it.
Okay, thank you. The next person is Eva Reyes. Eva Reyes, if you'd like to unmute yourself. Okay, we will come back to Eva. Let's go to Giordor Tronco, please.
Hello, my name's Giordor Tronco. For the resolution that Faith in Action, the Westlake tenants created, I guess I just wanted to see my comment in regards to like if landlords, when they do apply for this, for the 80% of, to receive 80% of the eligible tenants' rent, I'm wondering like what would you as the government do to inform all the landlords in Daly City? Because I feel like if they have the choice in choosing whether or not to apply for it, it kind of opens up to land speculation where people will try to kind of force people to be moved out while trying to be sure they kind of maximize their profits. And like that's compared to like if the tenant, as the resolution says, if they do it themselves, they will only receive 25% of what they owe. I feel like if it's done that way, it would be putting the responsibility on the tenants versus on what should be the landlord's responsibility. And I'm also concerned like how will you help them in this process for when they do apply, specifically for the tenants and also for the landlords too? Um, I'm also interested as a city council and our government, what will you do when landlords do know about the eligibility and choose not to do it and when tenants do apply that they're still coerced in being evicted? And what will you do then in order to address this? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And uh let's go back to Eva Reyes. If you'd like to speak, please unmute yourself. Eva Reyes. Okay, let's go to Cindy Hernandez.
Hi, my name is Cindy Hernandez, mother of two minor children. And I have lived in Daily City for two years. I live in the Westlake Village Apartments. I was unemployed. My husband and I were left without work since they were in the restaurants branch. And it was the first thing that I closed. I didn't, I didn't know, not now about programs until until I recently relied some I do to this and the high rent. I have a great rent debt and I keep seeing people evicted even though a moratorium is supposed to protect us. Um, I am afraid I will have to leave my home and my neighbors will have now here. Council members, I encourage you to vote yes on our resolution, the right to stay home, to keep our families safe. I encourage you to continue working to protect us even after the pandemic passes by creating more protection so that this does not happen again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, the next person is Annie Lemus. If you'd like to unmute yourself.
I need translate, please.
Okay, we have Victor to help.
Thank you, Stephen. Buenas, buenas noches, señor. Si, si, para hacer su comentario, si puede mantener los trozos manejables. De esa manera todo mundo puede escucharle lo que usted tenga que decir.
Sí, gracias.
Adelante.
Hola, mi nombre es Annie Lemus y he vivido en Daily City por quince años.
Hello, my name is Annie Lemus and I've lived in Daily City for fifteen years.
Soy líder de Fe en Acción.
I'm a leader with faith in action.
Y soy madre de dos niñas que asisten a las escuelas Woodrow Wilson y Ben Franklin.
So, and I'm a mom of two girls that go to the schools, one of them in Woodrow Wilson and the other one in Ben Franklin.
Como líder, he tenido comunicación con la comunidad.
So as a leader, I've been in communication with the community.
Especialmente con latinos.
Especially with Latinos.
Personas que fueron desalojadas de los apartamentos de Westlake.
People that have been affected from the apartments over in Westlake.
Por no poder pagar la renta.
For not being able to pay their rent.
Personas que tienen tarjeta de crédito hasta el tope.
People that have maxed out their credit cards.
O simplemente tienen que mudarse a otra ciudad por el alto costo de la renta.
Or just simply people that have to move out because of the high cost of the rent or living.
Algunas personas saben que la moratoria los protege.
Some people know that this moratorium protects them.
Pero debido al acoso de los dueños de apartamentos terminan yéndose a otro lugar.
But because of their harassment of the landlords, they end up going somewhere else.
Realmente me preocupa que a dónde van a ir la gente que ya no puede seguir pagando la renta.
Really, I'm concerned as to where these people are gonna go when they can't continue to pay the rent.
Porque después de la moratoria.
Because after the moratorium.
El alto costo de la de la renta seguiría.
The high cost of rent will continue.
Por favor, señores del concilio, voten con un sí a la resolución que estamos pidiendo.
So please, council members, vote yes to this resolution that we're asking for.
Para proteger a los inquilinos.
To protect the renters.
Todos tenemos derecho a permanecer en nuestros hogares.
We all have the right to remain in our homes.
Y que nuestras familias se sientan seguras.
And have our families feel safe.
Sabemos que la pandemia cada día se acerca al fin a medida que las personas sean vacunadas.
So we know that the pandemic is coming to an end as long as people continue getting vaccinated.
Pero les pedimos, trabajen en esto.
But we ask you to to work on this.
Porque el alto costo de la vivienda aún después de la pandemia.
Because of the high cost of living even after the pandemic.
Seguro continuará y eso no es lo que queremos.
Will for sure continue and that's what we don't want.
Queremos vivienda asequible para todos.
We want affordable housing for all.
Protección para todos y no permitan que esto vuelva a suceder.
Protection for all and don't allow this to ever happen again.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Um, the next person is Shaquille Ali. If you'd like to unmute yourself.
Uh, yes, thanks. Once again, um, many people have spoken, so I'm not gonna speak much on this. I just wanted to say that um I I too, like Mr., I think his name was Tronco. Um, you know, resolutions are nice, but I too am curious about what actual action the council can actually take um to really protect people. And so I think a lot of the comments that are have been made tonight highlight the need for more discussions about inclusive housing, rent control or rent stabilization, uh uni- uh universal basic income or at least a living wage in San Mateo County, especially in Daily City. And hazard pay that's, you know, supplemented by the city and not just um expected to be picked up by the businesses. Um, you know, and there's a history of redlining and gentrification in San Mateo County, so we can't just put our head in the sand about this. Pre-COVID, there was already an issue with evictions, especially in Westlake Apartments. And um, you know, the rent goes up two hundred dollars at least every year, but people's salaries don't go up two hundred dollars a year. So um this is a serious issue that goes beyond a resolution just encouraging um, you know, the landlords to do their fair share of trying to keep their renters there. Um, so um, thank you for uh listening to all the speakers tonight and um I'm curious to see what the action will be.
Okay, thank you for your comment. The next person. Um, we could go back to Eva Reyes if you're ready to speak and Victor, maybe you could um just translate to um unmute yourself.
Thanks, Stephen, certainly. Eh, Eva Reyes, si quiere desilenciarse, por favor, para que pueda comentar. Señorita Eva Reyes.
Um, I'm okay. I don't need a.
Okay.
Translator. Uh, hi, uh. Can I start?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I am in solidarity with the Westlake tenants. I support and urge the council to pass this resolution uh as a leader with faith in action and Daily City for Black Lives. By passing the resolution, you'd be doing the bare minimum, protecting our neighbors to the right to stay home. It's horrendous that out of three thousand units, only half of them are even occupied at Westlake. The distress and trauma inflicted on these families, the children, seniors, working class BIPOC is already done. They're gone. Meanwhile, there's people in the streets, in our streets, yes, because it happens here in Daily City, and the problem of homelessness is so often ignored or seen as another problem. Um, that's come up in discussions before from past public comments, um especially recently with the um the conversations about the cannabis stores possibly opening. Um, and there was a lot of talk from a few council members about wanting to push away from those old narratives and stereotypes. But what are we doing now to protect um renters, our neighbors here? And I echo the comments made before me about landlords maximizing their profits. It's it's a year in. You know, how are we gonna protect them now? And this is like an e- like, not even an easy fix or solution, but it's 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 what, gonna cover eighty percent? And still, we have to convince the landlords to do that. And it's been said by the city, city council that uh there's a digital divide and outreach has been hard. So what type of outreach are we gonna, are we looking at to really be in support for residents? Um. Yeah, I I yield my time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Isabel Perez.
Buenas noches.
Eh, bueno, buenas noches, señorita Pérez. Si, para hacer su comentario, si puede mantener ahora sí los los trozos de información manejables para que de esa manera todo mundo pueda escuchar lo que usted tenga que decir.
Okay, perfecto.
Okay, gracias. Adelante, por favor.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Isabel Pérez. Soy organizadora comunitaria de Fe en Acción.
Good, good evening. My name is Isabel Perez and I'm a leader with faith in action.
Durante los últimos tres años he trabajado con familias de bajos ingresos en la ciudad del city.
So during the past three years, I've worked with uh families, low-income families in Daily City.
Y durante el tiempo de la pandemia hemos visto una crisis muy fuerte que se ha venido presentando.
And during the pandemic, we've seen a very high crisis that has been presenting itself.
Cada vez que nos comunicamos por teléfono y entablamos conversaciones con las familias.
So each time we talk over the phone and we catch up with the families.
El tema siempre es el mismo, el alto costo de la vivienda.
So the the topic or the theme is always the same thing. It's high cost of living.
Y los problemas de órdenes de desalojo que se están presentando.
And the problems of eviction that also present themselves.
Hoy realmente estoy muy contenta.
So today, honestly, I'm very happy.
Porque al fin eh en la agenda del concilio se ha tocado el tema de una resolución para proteger a la comunidad.
So because finally in the agenda uh uh agenda, there has been this topic to help the community.
El derecho de quedarse en casa ha quedado en esta agenda.
So the right to stay home has remained on this agenda.
Y pido a Dios que sea aprobada unánimamente.
And so I ask God that this be approved unanimously.
Porque será el camino para construir con ustedes.
Because this will be a way to construct alongside with you.
La seguridad de muchos de los residentes de nuestra comunidad.
For the security of many of the residents in our community.
Para que tengan el derecho de permanecer en sus viviendas con sus familias seguros y tranquilos.
To have the right to remain in their house with their families calmly.
Esta será la única manera.
This will be the only way.
Como podremos lograr que nuestra comunidad y nuestra ciudad realmente crezca y se haga fuerte.
Our city and our community grow and be strong.
Porque todo el tiempo muchas familias se van.
Because many times people, families just leave.
Dejando atrás las escuelas y toda su vida y sus raíces.
Leaving behind their schools, their entire life, the roots that they've had.
Les agradezco infinitamente por escucharme. Dios les bendiga.
So thank you infinitely for listening to me and God bless you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Russell Lee.
Um, hello, uh, hello, city council. Um, yeah, I wasn't really like planning to speak on this item, but just to echo um what everybody else has been saying along the lines of, you know, like making sure that we keep like people like in Daily City here and the tenants at Westlake, if, you know, like they're they're suffering displacement, like a lot of people in the Bay Area and like, like housing and the like what everybody else has been saying, the right to raise your family in the community and able to have like a stable life is, should be, it should be a guarantee. And just like something for after the, after the pandemic is over, um, I believe like tenants' rights, uh, tenants protections, things like uh rent control could do like so much for for tenants like the ones at at Westlake. And I encourage you to look forward towards um that type of legislation. So, you know, even after like the pandemic is over, you could keep the residents who deserve to be here, here. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Eduardo Vernier.
I first want to thank everybody for uh giving me the opportunity to speak up and make some observations. I'm not gonna be redundant. A lot of the uh previous uh speakers have already addressed some of the most important issues, but I wanna make the observation. I've been in, you know, this is uh this observation. I've been in Daily City since uh uh two thousand. And I just wanna bring the point of uh the real estate bubble in California going back to two thousand eight, which started sometime in two thousand six, two thousand seven, and really uh getting out of hand in two thousand eight. When I moved to Daily City, I moved to Westlake Village Apartments and my rent was two thousand dollars. Eventually was two thousand two hundred. When the bubble took place, um, I happened to, for some odd reason, uh, get on my computer and looked at how much Westlake Village Apartments was renting the same unit uh type I was renting from them for twenty-two hundred dollars. And I happened to have noticed that they were renting it for one thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars. I walked up to them and they uh eventually agreed to drop the price from twenty-two hundred uh to one thousand three hundred seventy-five. If that could be done in the, in, you know, during that time, I don't see why something similar couldn't be done nowadays. I just came back from uh helping uh uh one of the many families that I have helped moved out of Westlake Village Apartments. Uh. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, the next person is um Joss. If you could state your full name before your comment, please.
Yeah, my name is Jasmine Ordóñez. Um, I also wasn't gonna speak on this comment, on this um this item, but just, you know, I also stand in solidarity with the tenants of Westlake. It also um, you know, worries me a lot as a Daily City resident because most of these tenants uh are people of color, specifically, you know, Latino uh folks. And um, as we know, there have been about three ICE raids in the past year and a half just in this apartment. The last uh ICE raid, the last time ICE came in and took command was at these apartments. And it's really worrying that we're not addressing that as well. And that, I'm not sure if the tenants know about that, but when we were out there, we were informing the community and people were thanking us because this isn't something that's transparent to the community, that there's ICE raids, there's ICE in that area. Uh, and as we know, our sheriff also cooperates with the ICE, so that's very dangerous. Um, so I support that these tenants want to be safe in their home. Um, and yeah, I just wanted to address that because that is where one of the last ICE raids happened, was in that Westlake apartment.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Maricela Pena.
Maricela. Hello. Hi, um yeah, so um sorry, I live in the Westlake Village area and like I just wanna share like a little bit of my story. Um a year ago I moved to Westlake, you know, um before moving to Westlake, I wasn't stable. I I was a teen mom. I now have my baby. It's like he's three, he's going to four and like we finally got to um to a place where we could be stable, but due to the pandemic, like everything is like, I feel like we're going through the same um process again where I feel like they're gonna kick us out. And like I don't, I can't afford an apartment that is so expensive and now I don't have like I don't even have anything safe for me or my kid and like I would like to like, I would appreciate if you guys like could help us, not just me, but the whole community. And I know maybe it's a lot to ask, but if you guys like, you know, see the situation, it's not like we don't, we don't wanna work. It's because there's not a lot of jobs now. And you know, it makes me nervous. Like I ask myself, where am I, where am I gonna go now? Am I gonna go, am I gonna be homeless again, or do I have to look for shelter? And like, you know, I don't want my kid to go through that again. And like, it's heartbreaking. Sorry. It's heartbreaking because like um I do not have anybody's support. Sorry. I don't have like family support. I just have me, you know, and I'm twenty, I'm twenty-two and I'm trying to make it out, you know. I don't wanna, I don't wanna be unstable. Sorry. Um but you know, I won't be able to say much.
Your time has ended, um so if you could.
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay, okay. Thank you for your comments. Um the next person is Nico Chupentzi.
Yeah, hi. Um not to repeat um what's already been said so well by somebody in the community, um but just to echo those comments and um it really is, you know, underscore the fact that um many of us who, you know, live here in Daly City have struggled to stay here. Um I'm a renter myself, um have been for many years and understand, I've heard from um friends um and a lot of the community um in terms of affordability in Westlake, um they've been pushed out for years, um as we've heard. Um on top of that, I know the Daly City um council has heard um considered um laws, policy around rent or rent stabilization. And those who weren't passed, I know there was um a hold on uh any uh evictions um prior. Um there was that in twenty nineteen, but since then we haven't seen any other action except from the state. Um in the state, uh through Governor Newsom, I think, um Rep David Chu and um a few other folks, of course, the legislature passed rent control. And so we have that five percent plus the cost of living, but we know that that in the Bay Area, that amounts to about nine or ten percent raises to a rent per year um as a maximum, which displaces so many people that um it's not something we're making up. It's not something that I think is unheard of. I know that city council is taking measures to address housing in our community. However, um in light of the past items on today's agenda and ongoing developments, we know that building more market rate housing is not gonna solve anybody's problems here in our community. While it will provide housing, affordable housing is in dire need. And beyond that, those who already live here need some kind of rent stabilization and protection that goes beyond what we're seeing during COVID nineteen, which of course even has affecting us all. We need more creative solutions in ways to preserve that. So I would encourage the council to consider all these recommendations. And of course, thank you for um this resolution and the work of Faith in Action, everybody in the community for bringing it to the attention of our community here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this item? I do not see any other raised hands. Okay, mayor, it looks like we've wrapped up public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Stoltz, and I wanna say thank you to everyone that provided public comment on this item. Um and uh you know, it's uh something really important that we hear straight directly from community members. Um this resolution was brought forth to me from the community, for the community, and um wanted um uh to let you all know that uh that's why it's on the table. I had the opportunity to meet with Faith in Action, with uh many of the community members that uh shared their stories and also um proposed this resolution that is in front of us. And so just wanted to share that with my colleagues. Um also, in the question of um you know, the resolution uh language came directly from Faith in Action and the community members. But I I do wanna say that um that our staff uh was also present to hear from them directly. Um so it come from a background of public administration. And so with that background, it's always around the end goal of figuring out um how how can we actually um make sure that this program or how do we assist in reaching out to landlords, right, encouraging them to apply? Um I hear there's two things here. Well, number one is not everyone may know about the program and um understand the program. Number two, um it sounds like it's very cumbersome to apply um as far as the application process. So those are two things that I know um from initial conversations with community members that uh it's important to kind of see where uh we can provide support in that regard. And so I know this uh resolution is um uh from the community, but I'd like to add a whereas clause, um so uh that um there is some action based um support uh in continuity to working with one another. And so what I I want to propose in addition is a whereas clause is the city of Daly City staff will work with Faith in Action to find ways to reach out to landlords and also um the community members to find, let's see, whereas, to reach out to landlords to find ways to reach out to landlords and um work with community to ha- uh work with community around access, um more accessibility to um application assistance. And and the reason with that is 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 um this is, you know, a resolution and in fact of uh, you know, taking action, but I think we we know that it's a step further. Um being able to uh work with our housing staff um who has um, you know, uh the expertise and then also working with the community-based organization, Faith in Action, who um also has, um they're on the ground and and working directly around the needs of of the tenants. Also, that's one uh one um aspect that I I just want to um insert as a whereas clause.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Digi Vani.
Thank you. Uh Rose, I have a quick question. So for everyone that doesn't know already, I live at Westlake Apartments, but I wanna support the resolution uh to the, through the city attorney. I don't wanna make sure there's a conflict of interest. Rose, my question is, because it's general and does not um name Westlake Apartments, it's just to landlords in general, am I allowed to vote on this and support this as I want to?
Yes, I don't, I don't see a conflict of interest, Councilmember Digi Vani, in regards to Westlake. Um just because of the comments and some of the residents live there.
Right, correct, cuz, yeah, cuz I wanna make sure that I support it um a hundred million percent. But I wanted everybody to know, most of you know where I live at um and Faith in Action, so. And also, also full disclosure, I had already connected um um a couple of the the workers of the of that were in at the vaccination site at Westlake have already tried to reach out. And I think that, like you said, Madam Mayor, that it'll be great to have them as the the connective piece because um I spoke with those employees that are already communicating with the Samaritan House, um with people that have lived in their community but needed help via its the language or via it's the um to make sure it's to for the paperwork or whatever. And so I made sure that Carolina them had that information. So I wanna be transparent about that as well um to my council members and to the mayor. So thank you for that, um city attorney and obviously, most everybody knows that I'm in full support. And I would like to ask our council we would also like to see, as somebody mentioned, a plan of action that may go beyond this. Like a resolution is a great thing, symbolic, and it's great that we're gonna have our staff working with them. But maybe we could figure out at a council meeting how to make it uh more viable, because such a large percentage of renters are in our community. And uh we wanna be fair to everyone and we wanna make sure that that these families that are being forced out um because especially because of COVID, it are not supposed to or what have you, that we do something as that is a plan to move forward as a council that maybe has more um legislative uh process to it. At that time, maybe we could have a study session, uh maybe the with the faith in action, I'm not sure. But at this point, I do support this resolution. But I also support that actions because a resolution is symbolic, while it will be steps forward. And I appreciate the faith in action and the community members um bringing this forward with a light and um heartbreaking light, I must say. Very heartbreaking. Um so, um thank you very much and thank you to the city attorney. I look forward into supporting this and supporting our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Digi Vani. If there's um any other comments or questions, um I do wanna mention that, as stated earlier, um their, you know, staff was able to be present with Faith in Action. Um also Vice Mayor Das Magwal. And so, you know, there you know, this resolution was brought forth to us, but in that meeting, it was also around really looking towards implementation and how to move forward. And so I wanna thank the leadership of Faith of Act in Action and all the leaders there that had mentioned that, you know, it's a continuous dialogue of working with one another. And so um and uh I think that's something that uh will continue. Vice Mayor Das Magwal.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I just wanna um say thank you for all the guest speakers that came out. And it's getting late in the night and, you know, it's dinner time and the last thing you all wanna do is come onto a city council meeting, but I myself is a renter and um I've been speaking to like students of mine that have been affected by COVID and it's something that is um unprecedented and we gotta do unprecedented things. So I really hope that we go beyond the resolution as well. I also wanna um give a big um um appreciation to Mayor Manalo for sitting up um or working collaboration with Faith in Action to putting together that meeting where we had staff, myself, Mayor Manalo, and in having this collaboration of the community and um city staff and leadership to bring this on to the floor today. So um I'm in full support of this and I yield my time.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Das Magwal. And I see Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Hey, thank you so much. Um I'll say at the onset, I am a complete support. However, um I need clarification on the amendments to be added. So my first question is to the city attorney. Uh when you're talking about rents and the collection of rents, uh to my understanding, this is not a criminal matter, but it is a civil matter. And can the city interject its uh uh involvement in regards to civil matters?
So um if the city is not a party, no, uh it it would be a private action uh with the tenants and the landlord.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking. So passing such a resolution to include additional amendments and uh say, for instance, one particular group, I do see a common denominator here, and that's Westlake Apartments. However, this resolution is based for the entire city of Daly City, all landlords and all tenants uh having the right to stay at home. To I specifically identify uh one particular group. Uh I I believe there are other groups within our city who can provide resources such as Daly City Partnership. I have a problem with the amendments. Uh and I wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Um my understanding of the amendments to through the mayor, it is general in scope in regards to creating accessibility and action. It's not really specific for the city to take action, but to provide resources. So um unfortunately, I kinda was going pretty fast on 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 the motion itself. Um Mayor Manala, so is there any clarification you'd like to provide? Cuz I I did get the gist that it was general in scope that you would like to have some form of action in terms of resources, accessibility in implementing uh the resolution, but it's not necessarily that the city's gonna go in and file, you know, be a party to any action. So perhaps if you can clarify that, that that would be very helpful.
Uh yes, uh Councilmember Sylvester and uh city attorney Zimmerman, it is uh uh definitely on the along the same lines as you mentioned that um in the scope of the resolution, um it doesn't say exactly um the next steps. And it uh the whereas clause that I I'd like to introduce is basically um what you mentioned around uh working towards, not necessarily the city of Daly City in projecting with uh the landlord and the tenant. It's more around what are kind of the ways um to be able to systematically be able to support um and encourage landlords to apply, right? And 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 that's what I was talking about. Um we heard two things that that not everyone understands the program or knows of the program, and there needs to be an encouragement of it, right? And number two is if there is um they they need support, whether it is, it's talked about Daly City Community Service Center. Um but being that Faith in Action had brought this forth, um hearing from them around ideas that they come from them as tenants, may 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 um they may, some of them may be from Westlake, some of them may be from other areas of the city. But it's really around uh supporting the resolution, right? To to ensure and um promote the program that is at hand with the state. So that's really the, you know, the the rationale with the additional uh language.
Well, I don't have a problem. As a matter of fact, I commend Faith in Action for their uh uh steady, willing, and constant uh advocacy of tenants uh that who are affected. But there are other organizations within But there are other organizations within our cities, and I don't want to exclude them. I would go along with the amendments, provided it is suggested that Faith in Action and any other tenant advocacy groups within our city is given the same amount of resources.
Councilmember Sylvester, I'm happy to edit that with other organizations. So.
Thank you. That's all I have.
That's good.
You have another comment, Councilmember Sylvester? I see your hand.
Yeah, I'm trying to take that hand down. I'm looking for, how do you do it? And it disappeared though, me. I'm sorry. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. So I think it's the intent to ensure that the next steps move forward. And I know that we'll be working closely with organizations like Faith in Action, Faith in Action, and other organizations that really want to be able to use the state program, which we know is extremely important, because, you know, people are in debt, and they're trying to remain in their homes. So with the additional language provided here with the amendment, you know, I move to approve the resolution unless there's any other comments, and looking for a second.
If I can just say that I want to thank you for your leadership on this and for meeting with Faith in Action. This was really a community effort that resulted in something that was really tangible and good for the community. I enjoyed listening to the stories. Maybe enjoyed is not the right word. I was actually heartbroken to hear some of the stories that the community members, especially the young mother who is struggling and lives in Westlake. I'm disturbed to hear that there have been some ICE raids at the apartments. That is new information to me, and I'm very concerned about that. And I'm hoping that we can look into that and make sure that that doesn't happen, because we are on to intensive purposes, a sanctuary city, and that should not be happening. So it's because of these kind of outreach efforts, these kind of public forums, that we're able to listen to the community and find out what's going on, that I'm grateful that you were able to get this piece together, and I fully support it, and with all the amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura, for your comments and your support. So at this point, I'm asking for a second for the. I have a second from Councilmember Giovanni, and at this time, may we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much. Thanks to all of the community members that came here this evening to speak, and also just wanted to let you all know that the city has also provided over a million dollars for renters assistance, and that is being facilitated through the Daly City Community Center. And that's also another resource for you all, and just wanted to share that. So thank you again, and I know that we're going to continue working with one another. Moving on to item number, item number 12.
Item number 12 was approved through the consent agenda, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'm all the way scrolled down on my agenda. Let me pull it up. Okay, so now moving on to our ordinances. Item number 13, this is the second reading of the ordinance number 1446, adding chapter 17.56 to the Daly City Municipal Code regarding CC Commercial Cannabis Combining District. And at this time, we have Attorney Zimmerman present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. As you will recall, this item came for introduction of an ordinance in regards to adding chapter 17.56 to the Daly City Municipal Code. This is the second reading for adoption, and this is in regards to the Commercial Cannabis Combining District.
At this point, are there any comments for my colleagues? It's a second reading, and during the second reading, is there public comment?
To the extent that there are comments that need to be made, it's not a public hearing. The council can hear comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there, at this point, are there any comments in the public? And if so, we'll provide an opportunity for two minutes.
Okay, so if you would like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call your name. The first is Nick Ochi Pinti.
Thank you. Yes, I would just like to say, and following up from the last discussion of this at a prior council meeting, consider in these districts with this new zone overlays and any consideration of changing those that we consider the schools in the local area that have not been, at least included in this current document, or maybe revisiting other documents, primarily Westmore High School, Fernando Roosevelt, Fernando Rivera Middle School, and Thomas Edison, of course, which are all located not far from Skyline Plaza, in addition to, I believe, a Pace Learning Center, which is in the plaza. And just to echo prior comments too, in terms of considering extending the 600-foot buffer zone from schools to 1,000 feet. I know these details aren't included in this document, but I would just like to echo that and prior comments at previous meetings. Thanks again. Thank you again for your consideration.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Grace David. Grace David, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Grace David. After the March 22 meeting, I was deeply disturbed by the passing of the six recreational cannabis dispensaries, only 600 feet from schools, which is one average block from schools. You've heard from the residents who spoke arguing that there are too many and too close to schools. I have strong belief that this is not right for our community. The next day, I drew up a petition, which at the same time calls what people think is an acceptable number of cannabis stores here in Daly City. So far, I have 177 signatures from Daly City residents 18 years old and above. These are just my friends and some of their family members who were at home at the time I approached them. Out of 177 people, 150 wrote zero. They do not want cannabis store, recreational cannabis stores in Daly City. And the rest did not exceed two stores. So 27 were two and, one and two. I gave a copy of that petition form to the City Clerk office today. I had delivered it to City Hall and asked them to give the council members a copy. I hope you all received it. With that, I hope you'll reconsider, because it's really disturbing for us. Everyone I spoke to were, wanted to take a copy and get signatures from other people. So my petition form is still out there. They're still getting signatures. So far, the 177 I gave you, 150 said zero. They don't want any. I hope you'll reconsider that, and thank you for this opportunity to express our views.
Okay, thank you for your comments. In just one moment, I'll call the next person. Okay, the next person is Alina Yang, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Hi, hello, and good evening, council members and community members. My name's Alina Yang. I'm a representative of the Daly City Prevention Collaborative, which is a program about substance prevention and leadership development with the local Daly City youth, specifically the middle schoolers at Polisita Mill. To reiterate what we said last month, and also following up with all the other comments about this, we'd really like to suggest that the city decides on a, at least 1,000-feet distance away from schools and other education or youth-related areas. Mainly because, like mentioned, 600 feet ranges from one to two blocks, and a lot of students tend to walk to school or get dropped off a little farther away. And it's just not enough space that feels safe enough. And according to a lot of research, a lot of cities have also taken up the 1,000-feet barrier distance. And we would just like to encourage this as well. So thank you very much for your time, and have a good night.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I believe that is the last raised hand we have here.
Thank you, Mr. Solti, and thank you for all those that provided a public comment on this item. If there, at this point, are there any comments for my colleagues or discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I'd like to acknowledge that we did receive a copy of what the community members wrote in the petition. And I want to acknowledge that and thank them for voicing what they appear to not want in our community or what they do want. And it looks like it was open-ended, where it says acceptable number of cannabis. It was swayed one way or the other, and I noted that the majority voted zero, and only a few put maybe one or two. So I still stand in my objection. I also stand in objection to the part of where I know that there was a committee report in November 23, which never mentioned the map with the 600 feet, which disturbed me, that that never came back to the council. And although a colleague mentioned for me to watch the planning commission, that obscures the process, that a subcommittee is only a, not a decision-making process. It is just suggestions, and then that is supposed to come back to the community. So that I wanted the public to know and just to reiterate. But I'm also not against people and their medical needs as well, when they have cancer or any of that, as I know that that is so important, their personal use. And while this is talking about 600 feet and the cannabis retail stores, and I think, so it's more about that than it is, no, the objections of people's personal things, I don't object. It's the process as well, or the lack of process as well. So thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Appreciate that. And thank you to the community for taking action on petition as duly noted. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the record.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. Are there any other comments or questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. And at this time, may we have roll call, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
No.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 14, I think it's also Attorney Zimmerman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. This is an item for second reading that came before the council by introduction at the last regularly scheduled meeting. This is in regards to repealing and replacing chapter 5.014 to the Daly City Municipal Code regarding the commercial cannabis regulations.
Thank you very much, Attorney Zimmerman. If there are no public comments, I'll ask my colleagues if there's any discussion. Seeing none at this time, any discussion from my colleagues? If not, entertain a motion to approve the second reading.
Motion to approve the second reading?
I have a first by Vice Mayor.
Second.
I have a second from, was that you? It was, it was.
Mr. Sylvester, I think.
Councilmember Sylvester? Was that you?
No.
No, okay. Oh, it was Councilmember Buena Ventura. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And may we have roll call, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Abstention.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much. All right, thank you. At this point in time, we are at public appearances and oral communications on any item not on the agenda. You have two minutes.
Okay, if any member of the public would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call your name. And then please just pay attention to the timer on the screen, so you can judge the two minutes. The first person is Nick Ochi Pinti.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, I'd like to speak on an important issue. I think all of us may have seen in the news, and that's that a man was shot and killed recently, this week, just by Daly City bar, a few blocks down. Just to underscore what we're seeing nationally and international news, you know, Dante Wright was another man who was just shot and killed in Minnesota. And seeing the reaction is something that I think we all feel. We all know that is a reality here in Daly City as well. To echo a few things, one, we're asking for transparency around this issue immediately. Watching the press conference this morning in Minnesota underscored the kind of actions that a city can take, even though we know this investigation is being handled by the DA here in Samatelle County. We also know that the DA has handled other cases in ways that we don't all agree with, and ways that we think that justice could be provided differently, if not more justifiably. So we're urging complete transparency around that with the family, obviously, all those involved and the public. Beyond that too, just in light of the fact that we're addressing all these hate crimes against our Asian-American community, and to stop Asian hate, and to think about public safety in a way that sustains our community, especially here in Daly City. And for a crime to happen like that, for somebody being shot like that, just a few blocks away from where we held a visual with Angelo Quinto just less than a month ago. just a few blocks away from where we held a vigil with Angelo Quinto just less than a month ago, is heartbreaking to see that and to understand that I know people are working to address these things, but we need to do this a little bit differently and in a way that ensures transparency and justice. In addition to that, understanding that the Black Lives Matter movement is more than just a momentary thing. This is something that we've been doing and seeing for many years in terms of civil rights and human rights. And so ensuring that and understanding that we want to work with the community to be able to provide that, I would encourage the City Council to make a public statement as soon as possible and address this with full confidence in the public to also be a part of that process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Jodor Tronco.
Hello, my name's Jodor Tronco. I'm just echoing what Mr. Uchupini mentioned. I just wanted to see, like, when should we expect a follow-up date in terms of, like, being more informed on what happened on that day? As he said, like, out of us such as myself, we live like close to that. That's like literally down the street from my house. So I would like to get full transparency in due time of like what happened, just to be more informed for public safety. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Russell Lee.
Hi, I'd just like to again echo what the last two speakers said about demanding transparency around the shooting and killing. And also, yeah, like thinking about Dante Wright in Minnesota and thinking of the man who's, the man and the family who, you know, yeah, just thinking about his family. And I just want to say that, like, I grew up around like the Daily City area. I would go to, you know, Daily City Geller Park with a lot of friends, and some of them were like black youth. And just like ever since, like, Trayvon Martin and the host of other people whose lives have been taken by the police, like, you know, it's like something scary that, you know, that it is to just like feel that, you know, their lives could just be taken by like a traffic stop like with Dante Wright. Or I don't know the circumstances of the man whose life was taken, but, you know, you know what I mean? You know, like, like, we need to like divest away from, from like policing as a public safety institution. Like, we need to focus more around like alternatives, like, because like violence is not just at the hands of police, but violence is also by the lack of access to healthcare. It's like instability, housing instability, it's lack of access to cultural and nutritional food. And it's just not to take away from anything else that, you know, like we're talking about around like policing. It's just we need to move away from, yeah, policing as an institution. And like, yeah, it is like hard to talk about these things. And we do have like a culture where we, you know, center around it. But we really need to, we really need to have that conversation and ensure that no other lives are taken because of that system. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person is Jas, I think it was Jasmine.
Yeah, Jasmine. I'm sorry. Yeah, so honestly, the community is enraged right now. I'm enraged right now. Since this news came out, we have been relentlessly looking for information ourselves, and we found it. It's crazy to me how us as community members had to do all the research to find out this person, to locate the family. I just spoke with the sister, and she wants to let it be known that the family is coming for justice. The family is coming for justice, and they are broken that they lost their brother. We have the name. You know, we're, we're going to be working with the family. I don't know, we, we're past reform, honestly. Like, this is something that I feel like a lot of the community, we know that this council, maybe not everybody, but a lot of, a lot of, a lot of you are pro-cop. And that's why a lot of people are discouraged to come on here and even make comments like this or even address this. But this is our community, and we are, we are so broken over this, that this is being allowed to happen, that you guys are talking about putting money towards housing but not towards another mental health physician when we still only have one? We have one. I just saw like five cops rush right now with the fire department for nothing over here by my house. I live by somebody that has mental health problems, and I've had to talk to the mom and de-escalate it without the police because they're, they're not treated like human beings. This is a black person. You guys show up to Angelo Quinto's vigil and like, you know, say things. You can't choose what lives matter. You can't. The last council meeting, Glenn was naming the cops that got killed. What about the young people that have been killed here? Like, we can't just pick whose lives matter. We can't keep sweeping this under the rug. We cannot. This is a person's life that was killed, a father with two children. So that's what I want to say tonight. I was going to say something all proper and everything, but I'm done with the proper. What is the officer's name? We want transparency, the community, not just for DC, not just us. The community is messaging us like, what is going on? Why do we not know?
Thank you for your comments. The next person is Maya. Please state your full name.
Hi, I'm Maya Elgerico. Just like everyone else, I am demanding transparency with the family and the community affected with the recent officer-involved shooting and killing here in Daily City. We know that our police department has historically and actively, still actively engages in police violence. You were thanking the police department earlier. You say that they, they have sworn to reduce crime rates and improve the quality of life of our community, but frankly, this, just this incident proves that false. What about the crimes that the police commit against the community? What about the quality of life that was just stolen by the hands of the police here? The fact that that man was shot by the police across the street from Marchbank Park, where the vigil, like they were saying earlier, of, in the memory of Angelo Quinto, who lost his life to the hands of the police in Antioch, speaks to the fact that the police continue to lack the respect and ability and, and ability necessary to ensure public safety in our own neighborhoods. And if I remember correctly, some of the council members there were stating how deeply that incident infected them. Yet in this case, here in Daily City, absolutely nothing. It's disgusting. It's a real shame to see our council show no sense of urgency or care when there is an officer-involved shooting here. It is inherently violent and negligent towards the safety and well-being of our community to ignore this incident. Prove to your community that our lives matter more than the commodification of our body and the labor that you benefit from. Prove to your community that black lives matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Samantha Avila.
Hi, my name's Samantha Avila. And again, as like many other people are repeating, I'm demanding justice for the man that was killed just a couple days ago. There's just, and I'm not talking about the justice that you all like, where it's just like a panel and like you say like, oh, his life mattered. And like, but it's okay. It's not all cops. No, I'm demanding for like actual justice. I'm demanding that the cop that murdered him, I want you to jail killer cops. Like, there is no reason that someone that you, you love to place cops as like, oh, they're here for safety and they're here to protect us. If that was really the idea of what a cop should be, then no one should be getting murdered. This was a father, like a brother, a family member, a Daily City community member. And he was murdered. Like, I don't, there's just the fact that there's so much silence about this and that there hasn't been any transparency in the process just shows how much Daily City PD and you, Daily City Council, don't care. It's just, it's enraging. Like, I don't, I don't know how you can sleep at night knowing that someone was murdered simply for being black, simply for being black in Daily City. I, I, I truly don't understand how you can sit up there and act like you really care about Daily City members, but you have not said anything about this man being murdered. What are we going to tell his children? What are we going to tell his family? What are we going to do? Are we going to continue to let these killer cops out on our street and let it happen again? I demand justice and I demand transparency.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next person is Shaquille Ali.
Good evening once again. I'm speaking in behalf of the community members who called me that evening when the unfortunate event took place. I don't have the details. I don't know who does have the, have the details except for some of our youth that really care about Daily City. So when something happens, people are reaching out to our young people, you know. So, you know, I've always was taught that we should teach the youth, and then the old will follow in shame. So I hope that we don't have to be shamed because we're not adamant about investigating what happened. I urge the council to please be transparent with us, following your protocol, of course. Find out what happened and let us know because people are afraid. People are, as they said tonight, they're enraged and they're confused. The main reason why people are confused is because we don't have any information. We're confused. We don't know what happened. So, once again, I urge the council to please, as fast as you can, following your protocol, to be transparent with us and let us know what happened.
Thank you for your comments. The next person is Jeremy Jansen.
Hi, my name is Jeremy, and I am with Daily City for Black Lives. I echo the comments before me, and I just want to say exactly what we had feared since the summer has happened. Someone has been murdered by Daily City Police less than a week after Mayor Manalo called for increased uniformed and plainclothes policing. To me, that sounds like blood on your hands. I am very aware of the Asian versus black narrative that is being perpetuated here in this city. There's been more police in the places where attacks had happened on our elders, yet those who are victimized, the families of those who have been victimized, don't feel protected. It's been put out there that nothing has been done for them. The circumstances and the reasoning does not matter for what had happened because that doesn't validate, validate the murder that happened last week, that state-sanctioned murder this summer, just last summer. Two months ago, after we had those empty, empty study sessions, an Afro-Latino man was targeted and brutally arrested on video, only months after the study sessions. It's often said that it doesn't happen here. We're Daily City. We're not Minnesota. It's happening. It happened. All these conversations about ethnic studies and showing up for community, it's empty. What more justice can we gain for the dead? He's dead. He's been killed by police that you led on to the community. True justice would be that this person would still be here at home. That's justice. No empty taking to the courts in a circus of politics in this game that you all play with people's lives. The gun is part of the uniform. I cannot reimagine public safety. Whose words were that?
Okay, thank you for your comments. That looks like we have finished up public comment, Mayor.
Thank you all so much for your public comment this evening. There is an investigation that is going on, and, and we are all concerned. And we are committed to transparency. At this time, there is a further investigation. Moving on to the next item, if there is, is if there's anyone that is moving on to any board or commission memberships at this time. Seeing none, moving on to council committees.
Mayor, I have a couple of announcements. I know it's not, I can't comment on public comment, so... You know what, I'm just gonna... I'll provide my, my... Updates for next meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Doc Sumpel. If there's no other council committee reports at this time.
Mayor, maybe I can make a comment. So, I just want to go back to the, the public comment part because I think, I'm, you know, I'm just sort of dovetailing off of Dr. Rod's clear, I think, reaction, and mine as well. And, you know, I think we're all very interested, puzzled, and concerned about what happened in Daily City with the, with the shooting. And I very much appreciate the concern the community in this meeting has expressed and the, the need to want some justice. That is absolutely fair and warranted and understandable. But I go back to what you said, Mayor, which is, you know, justice also is a process. And there is an ongoing investigation, which, you know, we are not privy to. We're no special than anyone else. And we have to let that investigation play itself out. And from that, we will figure out what justice should look like. So I know there's, there's, there's a hurting going on. There's an eagerness to, you know, demand certain things. But I would urge the community to, and this is no easy feat, but it's something that we need to do fairly, openly, and go through that process so that in the end, we could say that we investigated it or they investigated it, that we let the facts lead us to where they are. And then if there is some unfairness, some, some, something that we perceived is, is just not right or wrong, and then we will, we'll see where we are in terms of what we can do. But I just, I, I don't want the community to think that we're, we don't understand or that we don't care or we're just letting it go. That's far from the truth. I know that we are all very deeply concerned and affected by it. And, and so I just, I'm grateful for your comments, all of you who made public comment. But let, let's let the process take us where it, it leads to, and let's hope that justice will prevail. But let, let us... But let, let us not speculate as to what happened, as easy as that might be. And as hearsay upon hearsay statements come around. And let's see what happens. And so I'm, 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 I'm confident that, um, that the facts will come out and uh, whatever justice looks like will happen. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Benaventura. Are there, um, any other, uh, comments on, uh, uh, city council agenda?
Madam Mayor, is that the, not the committees, but the regular city council report?
City Council.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to, although with a deep breath, I want to let people know that this is, uh, the National Dispatchers Week, that we have many that used to be here at our Daly City and just acknowledge them that when we do call, um, ourselves or with our loved ones, that, uh, they are responsive and it's a very stressful job. And I believe it's even council member, um, some of us who has a son who is a dispatcher. Also, this is the 50th anniversary week of, it's called the Young Child. And what that mean is that those that are just like from the, the little ones, the little teeny ones, all the way up to our youth, it's a celebration of their life and their love in our community. So that's, this is the 50th anniversary. And maybe next year we can, um, celebrate that in person. So with that, I, um, I yield to you, Ms. Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember D Giovanni. Uh, if there's any city, other city council reports at this time? Uh, if none, uh, we'll be moving forward to the next agenda item. Um, any staff reports?
No staff reports tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Fristolti. Um, uh, at this time, we are at the adjourn in memory, uh, portion of the meeting and I will, uh, yield to, uh, Councilmember Benaventura.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Ruben Boonag. Mr. Boonag was the former owner and editor of the Manila Mail Newspaper. He since, uh, sold the paper to another, um, uh, entity, but he was always involved in the community and, uh, he will be very, very missed. I also would like to adjourn in, uh, former Assembly Mayor, um, Assemblyman Gene Mullin out of, um, also a San, South San Francisco. He, he served on the city council there and mayor as well. He's had a lifelong, uh, years of service, um, in government. I know he was also, um, a, a teacher, uh, professor, or I think it was at in high school. And he's also the father of, um, Assemblymember Kevin Mullin. So I'd like us to adjourn in his memory for all the great things he's done, uh, for the community. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Benaventura. Um, I, uh, will adjourn in memory for Marcela Basco Cicat. Uh, Elaine Velasquez's grandmother, who Marcela Basco Cicat was born in Pampanga, Philippines on June 29th, 1926. She was a firstborn of six children and helped her parents with caring and raising her siblings during World War II. Stella met and married her sweetheart Marceliano Cicat, a Filipino soldier serving the US Army. They were married in 1949 and raised 10 children. Stella was a strict mother who was known to scold and lecture often, but she wanted to ensure that her children kept themselves busy and working towards their goals. She instilled a strong work ethic and tirelessly, tireless determination to reach her dreams. In 1993, Stella and Buco migrated to the US and spent the next 20 years helping to raise their Filipino-American grandchildren in Daly City. Stella passed at the age of 94 and will be missed by the family that she leaves behind. Her memory will live on through her 10 children, 31 grandchildren and 23 great-grandchildren. Also, um, in honor of Franklin Charles McKinney, he was a Bay Area native who gave much of his life developing young youth through ba- basketball. Uh, he was also a deckhand on the blue and gold fleet. Every time he entered the room, he brought this amazing smile that brightened the room. He was a dear friend and, uh, to my husband and to our family. Uh, Frank was our groomsmen in our wedding. Um, he will be missed dearly for his warmth, kindness and jovial spirit. Also for Stephen Brian Lim, Keith Okada's, uh, best friend. Stephen Brian Lim was born on April 7th, 1969 in San Francisco, California. Only son of William Alter Lim for, from Phoenix, Arizona and Jana Yusuku Higashi Lim from Honolulu, Hawaii. He is a fourth generation Japanese-American with roots in Hawaii and third generation Chinese-American. He grew up and lived in Daly City since he was four years old, a true Daly City local, a California native. Stephen attended the Highlands Christian Academy from preschool until his sophomore year in high school and graduated from Westmore High School. He initially attended San Jose University as an aeronautical engineer major, but chose instead to open a comic book shop with his friend Fred Wong. He wanted to do something he enjoyed to share joy with others, so he opened up a comic, comic shop at the age of 20. The comic book shop was successful and touched and influenced a generation of Daly City youth, developing lifelong friends from that experience. At 16, he, Janet became his first love and they dated for a month until her father said she was too young to date and they broke up. But 20 years later, they ran into one another again through a common friend. Janet lives in Texas and Stephen in California, that he pursued her, won her heart and married her. They were married for 15 years. Their greatest day in Stephen's life was a day he became a dad. It was completely undone when his son was placed in his hands. Hi was a joy of his heart. Stephen was the best dad, a mixture of love and affection, uh, and loving firm discipline. The theme of Stephen's fatherhood, whether in affection, playfulness or discipline, all was founded on love. He had an amazing ability to communicate with others. He was an excellent listener and he had the ability to distill complicated thought into understandable language that to a four-year-old and to a 99-year-old could understand. His faith was evident in how he lived his life in his gracious feet. And, um, last but not least, Daniel Guarin, uh, which is, uh, Ray Guarin, uh, uh, Daly City Residence Brother. Maybe I'll, um, have a moment in silence.
Mayor, can I, can I adjourn it as well?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Um, I just want to, um, adjourn, um, on behalf of the hip-hop artist rapper Earl Simmons, AKA DMX, who's a prolific rapper and actor who rose to fame in the late 90s and 2000s and he was 50 years old. Um, he suffered a hard deck on April 2nd and he's a generational talent. Where I played a lot of his music during my undergrad years and I was, as a person that teaches, um, in the hip-hop learning community, it's type of learning community skyline, I want to honor his memory as well.
Thank, thank you, um, Vice Mayor Dr. Rod, um, Mapul. And um, I just, um, I, I don't know the, the details and, um, and, and the name, but at this time, I, in honor of, the, the gentleman that had passed away and, and many have, um, spoken up, um, for him. I, I don't know his name, but in, uh, as the investigation goes on, but it also, um, in, in honor of, of his life. Uh, maybe I'll have, um, a moment of silence. Thank you. Take care and be safe.